Board Clerk, Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Director Barlow.
Here.
Director Cook.
Here.
Treasurer Garcia.
Here.
Clerk Glaffin.
Here.
Director Marvin.
Here.
Chair Nathan.
Here.
Vice Chair Workman.
Here.
We now offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.01, Approval of the Agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Next item on the agenda is 3.01, Comments to the Board. It is important for the School Board to hear from our stakeholders regarding issues that impact our students, staff, families, and schools. We welcome communication via email, phone call, at our community engagement listening sessions, and here during comments to the Board. A reminder that Policy 206 and Procedure 206A, in accordance with Minnesota statute, set the time, place, and manner procedures and restrictions on comments to the Board. The policy and procedure focus on privacy protections for students and staff, and prohibit comments that are threatening, profane, lewd, vulgar, obscene, harassing, abusive, or constitute a personal attack on an individual. We welcome two speakers this evening. When your name is called, please come to the table, choose a microphone to speak into, and be seated. You will be heard more clearly by the Board and those in the room if you are seated and speak directly into the microphone. You will have three minutes to speak, and the timer will be displayed on the screens in the room. Please begin your remarks by stating your name. Our first speaker is... ...round of requests that were granted. So I, we thought that was very interesting. And so, our funds to support these grants come from personal and business donations, including school district payroll deductions. We also have an honor of staff member fundraiser. We have fundraisers which include Boo Fest, and movie nights, and others that we're looking at, and we have established memorial funds. And here's a list of our funds, I won't go through that, but there was, our first one was established in 1989, and our last one was just established last year. So we're still trying to raise funds to provide more and more grants, and at any point, we can also add to these funds. And I'll introduce Grace.
Hello. So our, this grant cycle, Fall/Winter 2022 to 2023, we awarded $10,302.63 to fund five innovative projects in RPS School District, and two of those will benefit all elementary students district-wide. We received a record number of applications this year, 22, so that was pretty exciting. And we selected the five winning projects using a diverse group of volunteer grant scorers. Our high-scoring applications proposed projects that are not currently available in the district, and that offer unique and innovative learning experiences with long-term impact. We also ask our grant recipients to follow up with a brief report to indicate how their project went, and include photos. And in February, we'll actually be having a, a former grant recipient come and discuss their project with you at the, the next School Board meeting. So we'd like to give our first award to Donna Brunskill, in recognition of her project, Tool Shed and Outdoor Classroom Anchor, for the John Adams World Garden.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate this greatly. At John Adams, we are building a world garden, and incorporating gardening practices from around the world. It's a large garden, and this grant, in conjunction with a grant from the People's Food Co-op, is going to allow us to build a tool shed. And what's kind of neat about this is we're going to partner with community ed, and the students are going to be learning trade skills, and the students will be building it with teacher support. So this tool shed will go with our world garden, it'll anchor an outdoor classroom area for us, and I think it'll be a valuable part of the school. So, thank you very much.
Our next grant recipient is Jennifer Brunger, and her project is Learning in the Making: Reimagining the Longfellow Maker Space for 2023. All right. Then we'd like to recognize Julie McLaren for her project at Gage Elementary, Dual Reset Rooms.
I have Amy Hughes with me as well, she's our Assistant Principal at Gage. We have a few notes we'd like to share. We'll keep it brief.
Mental health has been identified as a public health need in Olmsted County. The need is exacerbated at Gage Elementary due to stressors on students' families, where many students are at risk because of economic hardship and of high prevalence of adverse childhood experiences, or ACEs. During the past year, our care team spent 26,044 minutes, about 72 full school days worth of time, supporting students who are dysregulated.
So Gage's Dual Reset Rooms will help provide a space and the necessary tools to coach students on strategies to self-regulate their emotions and responses to difficult situations. The Refocus Room, one half of the Dual Reset Rooms, will help students organize tangled thoughts, while the Re-Energize Room will help students to burn excess energy productively. With strategic coaching with our care team in our Dual Reset Rooms, students will return to a learning state sooner, more regularly, and more independently. With this intervention, we will see a reduction in the number of minutes the care team is responding to dysregulation calls, and an increase in academic achievement as students are able to stay more focused on learning.
Thank you.
All right. And lastly, we'd like to recognize Laura Ealing for her two projects, Edison Robots and BeBot Robots, which will benefit all elementary schools in the district.
Thank you. So computer science promotes system thinking, problem-solving, testing, debugging. Coding with robots teaches computer literacy and digital citizenship, promotes creators of technology and not just consumers of technology. The more students that we have that understand computer science, the more innovations and new technology we can produce as a society. All this starts with coding with robots in the elementary school. So these two robotic progress, grants that I got, will be used by all elementary school students through the library system. So thank you very much.
Something else that we have started is to honor an RPS staff member, and we will accept donations to specifically honor RPS staff members, and a lot of times we'll set it up to like with an end of the year or holiday season gift. And so if you're interested, you can check rpsf.org to honor an RPS staff member, and our next opportunity will be in late May. Our next grant cycle is also coming up. We end one, and then we start planning for the next one. And so that will be for projects taking place during the 2023-24 school year. Application dates will be announced in March by email to staff, so start thinking about good ideas for next year. We're always looking for help with scoring these grant submissions, and we particularly need RPS staff to be on there, so get in touch with us if you're interested. And we are very grateful to the district for its support and cooperation in bringing these innovative proposals to life. For more information on us, how to volunteer, join our Board of Directors, or donate to support the mission so we can give more grants, check our website, rpsf.org. And at this point, are there any questions? Board members? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I would be remiss if I didn't thank both Jenny and Grace, but also recognize that returning to our boardroom for the first time since the end of her term is former School Board Director Amison, who I know works very intently on, on these RPSF grants every year, so welcome back. Agenda item 4.02, Board Member Committee Updates. Does anyone have any updates from their committees since the last meeting?
Well, I'll begin.
Go ahead.
If I may, I attended my first family and community engagement, new assignment, meeting, and how exciting it was. We have the opportunity, in terms of this particular agenda, to speak with individuals who were presenting and sharing information as it relates to broad-term Hispanic-Latin communities. And in doing so, I realized that unless there's a intentional, intentional effort to hear and understand where other people are coming from, you can waste a lot of time thinking that you know where they are. And, and so, this particular time was spent allowing individuals to share their journey, to share their challenges. One particular person, through a community ed, was able to accomplish a number of goals. And one final comment I'd like to make regarding family and community engagement is, I was unaware that the... I only hesitate because the question was raised, do Hispanics prefer to be called Hispanics, Latino? And so I don't want, and the question was said, the statement was made, well, to avoid offending anyone, you should probably ask them. And so, I'm not trying to offend, I'm actually going the opposite direction, trying not to offend, but I discovered that there's a Saturday School that occurs where students who have origin or, or roots within, and identify as such, are able to go spend a number of hours, culture, language, and then the basics of education. I thought, what a wonderful thing, and how I will do my due diligence to become more supportive of, of that particular community. Sometimes we only focus on community as we may define it, or we may be a part of, and I realize the importance of broadening, if you will, of that view. And then if I may also comment regarding this past week's experience at the statewide School Board Conference. I know my colleagues will want to comment quite a bit themselves, so I'll be brief. Time well spent. One of the keynote speakers shared the importance of whether we are aware of the weight of the bags that we may carry and lug around, they are indeed nonetheless still there, and may potentially affect our view of self and others. And I thought that was so important because sometimes we are wondering, well, what the problem or what the deal is, in terms of why is this person acting that way, or why are they more responsive to certain things? And it could very well be because of the weight that they're carrying. And, and so I'll afford my colleagues the opportunity to expound further.
Director Marvin.
As Mr. Barlow said, at the Minnesota School Boards Association Conference in Minneapolis, there are representatives from all over the state, and some wonderful workshops that help board members become better board members. One thing that particularly struck me, though, was the serendipity of how virtually every district in the state is involved in deeper learning. The notion that we want kids to really connect with what they're learning, to learn how to do something with that. And I was particularly taken by these works, they weren't workshops, they were called roundtable things, with, with students from different schools demonstrating what they'd learned. And it was all about, I learned this in school, and I'm using it to do something meaningful. It was project-based, it was hands-on, and the kids were so jazzed about it. The one that I loved the most were these middle school kids who had learned how to refurbish old laptops, fix them, and then provide them for free to students who didn't have, who didn't have a device. So the kids are learning all these tech issues, they're also learning about communication, they're learning about giving back, about service, and they have never had so much fun. These are middle school kids. So I'm thinking, we're doing, we're doing a lot of things well here, and I think we're going in the right direction, preparing our students for the future. Our education that we're providing is not what it was 30 years ago, and, and I'm really, really hopeful about, especially about this deeper learning initiative, as well as many of the programs we're already doing.
Anyone else? Well, okay.
I attended a session at the same conference that was entitled, "The Advocacy Roadmap for You and Your District: Putting Passion for Public Education into Action." I really appreciated the focus on public education and the passion for that, because I think not only this table, but I'm hoping everyone in the audience also shares that same passion. And it literally gave participants a roadmap for that advocacy with the current legislative session, so I'm excited to take a deeper look at that and share it with the other members of the Legislative Committee, that I think it'll give us my... gaps of some things that we hadn't thought about yet, that we can definitely do here at RPS.
All right. Thanks for those comments. Next item on our agenda is 4.03, Strategic Plan Summary. Superintendent.
Thank you, Director Nathan, and Board members, and I particularly have to thank Director Nathan, not only for that introduction, but for this amazing visual, which I know took you hours and hours to put together. Actually, finding the logos may have done that. But as Ms. Sam is bringing up a graphic, we want to make that kind of big, and for Kirk in there with, there are millions and millions of people on YouTube, show the graphic, you don't need to show me. We have got 130-page strategic plan that is in the research report that Wilder Research prepared, and since the Board approved that in July, we have been working to try and get clearer and clearer and clearer what the future director of Rochester Public School, future direction of Rochester Public Schools really is. And some out there who are tracking things like this will know, we tried a, a, a series of concentric circles that started with the student and moved it out, and there were a number of people who really loved it, and a number of people for whom that level of complexity made their heads hurt. And so this is our final representation of our strategic plan, and I will be... And I will be going out to meet with every school and program faculty in the district to share this and discuss it, and also with a wide array of community partners. And we settled ultimately on building blocks, which Alex and our communications office kind of updated to Legos, with the idea that we really are building a fundamentally different school district here. I think a school district that is going to look extraordinarily different three years from now and especially five years from now. So as we looked at the initiatives that are in that 130-page document, we tried to come up with a series of themes that run across those initiatives. And you can see them on the side of the building blocks graphic. The first involves shifting some of the fundamental systems that enable teaching and learning in our district. The second is empowering people who make all the difference in making those systems effective. The third is creating authentic communities at the school, district, and community level. The fourth level is strengthening some critical supports for our students. And then at the top, as Director Marvin was just mentioning, is a commitment to deeper learning. So very briefly, because the test of this is keeping it simple enough to follow, but not losing the complexity of the very ambitious agenda that this board has approved. So if you look at the shifting systems piece, it starts with changing the way we fund and staff our schools. That is work we will begin designing next year and implementing in the 2024-2025 school year. The reason that begins next year is because this year, we're getting the academic agenda right. But that is really critical work that will kick in next year. We've already begun the second building block, which is restructuring school improvement. The board has gotten updates from many of our schools, and we're going to hear from another one tonight, about how we are really rethinking the way we help our schools get better at getting better in having clear and actionable goals and using data and evidence to make decisions, and having really effective collaborative processes to achieve the ambitious outcomes that we have for our students. The third building block is one that will also begin next year, and that is a systematic review of school board policy to ensure that they are advancing equity. And there's some definitional work there to decide what exactly that means, but it grew strongly out of the community process that led to our strategic plan. And in essence, I think of it as saying, do our policies serve the students from marginalized communities and for whom we know the status quo won't hold? The fourth building block there, which will be before this board in some form this spring, is redesigning aspects of our transportation system. We know we have a number of issues, starting with addressing our school's start times. And I got some emails from teachers, elementary teachers on that this week, and no, we haven't dropped that. But it's broader than that. It's also ensuring that we are offering the highest-quality set of options to all Rochester students in every part of the city. And so stay tuned on that one. And then finally, it's appropriate, when we had the Rochester Public Schools Foundation here today, next year will also kick off a major effort to increase philanthropic support for the district. Later on the board's agenda tonight will be receipt, request for you to approve us accepting a $1.2 million grant from a national foundation to support our work on deeper learning. I think it's just the beginning of what we can achieve in terms of philanthropic support. Second category there is empowering people. The first building block there is strengthening our recruitment, induction, and support of staff. That is going to be critical. It's going to be critical for all staff, and especially for staff who are underrepresented in our school district when compared to our student demographics. The next building block in the empowerment category is developing leadership capacity. And we have got a strong start this year in providing coaching for our principals, but we are going to be defining what it means to be a high-quality leader at the school, district, and also teacher-leader levels, and rolling out a series of supports to help our leaders continuously, more effectively, guide this strategy throughout our district. Also kicking off next year will be a major strategy to uplift youth voice and leadership. And youth voice and leadership are two terms that are related but distinct. Youth voice meaning, do our students have a way to have their perspectives, their ideas heard and acted upon and listened to in our schools? But youth leadership is developing our kids as leaders. Can they run a meeting? Can they meet with someone in authority and present some options? Can they organize their peers to actually bring change in their schools and in their communities? And then finally, in the empowerment category, building pathways for every student to be sure that they are ready when they walk across that stage of high school graduation with a post-secondary institution or a career option that reflects their interests, their passions, their talents. That is not work that can start, as we all know. In 11th grade, it literally needs to begin in kindergarten, as kids are thinking about what they love, who they are, progressing through middle school as they decide where their passions are in terms of learning. Our third level is that creating community. This board has talked often about the work that we are doing around belonging, ensuring that all kids can be and become their best selves in our schools. It's also where we are setting high expectations for students and dealing with some of the issues that not only Rochester has encountered, but schools all over the country have encountered with students coming back from the pandemic. And as we heard a number of meetings ago, we've seen a very significant improvement in our disciplinary rates this year as opposed to last year. But that building block is about much more than discipline. It's about school culture, and it's about inclusion. Next one in the community category is parent and family engagement. And I have just received from the working group working on that, a really exciting proposal for our family engagement framework that I look forward to sharing with the board. So this year's priority is deciding on the big strategy for family engagement. Next year will kick off creating a program that will provide some of our parents for whom school in general may not have been the most positive experience, or perhaps they're entirely new to the country, and helping our families who want additional support understand how to make education and the education system work better for their children. And then the third building block in that community category is a new approach to community partnerships, really making sure that Rochester Public Schools is an authentic partner for community organizations that are also working to serve our students and our families, and that we are not only asking them, whether it's volunteer tutoring at the school level or system change at the district level, to help us meet our goals, but that we're also working to help them meet theirs. Then that fourth category of strengthening support, we will be in March receiving the results of our implementation review from the University, by the University of Minnesota, of our multi-tiered systems of support academically, socially, emotionally, behaviorally in the district. Where are we ensuring that all kids at that first tier are experiencing a solid core curriculum, but that students who need additional support are receiving it in a tier two that doesn't pull them out of that classroom, but that provides them with that additional assistance in reading and math and whatever subject area? And then at the top of the pyramid, our intentional supports for students for whom the traditional learning environment may not be effective, but it also can be with additional support. And we'll be looking to Dr. Abamu in the Office of Academics to be leading that really critical work going forward. Finally, in the strength and support category, is the work that we've decided we need to do with mental health, not just for students, but also for staff. And so we have a study session coming up on that. We know Dr. Garcia is a practitioner and leader in that area in her day job, and so that will actually be really exciting to begin that work in earnest. We know it's a societal crisis right now, and we need to step up our work in RPS. And then finally, at the pinnacle, the green Lego, is that work around deeper learning, which, as the board discussed at its last study session, in our framework is a combination of three things: mastery, identity, and creativity. Mastery, of course, being that students actually truly master a core body of core concepts and foundational skills, a less-is-more approach. Second, that they form identities as learners, as scientists, as artists, as writers, that are connected to that learning. And finally, creativity, as Dr. Marvin was just saying, they actually use that knowledge to solve problems and create things that are meaningful to them. So when I, when people ask me about what's really innovative about what we're trying to do in Rochester Public Schools, I think there are actually lots of answers to that. There are a lot of places where people talk about youth voice, youth leadership, and it never really gets operationalized. There's a lot of places where people talk about diversifying the teaching corps and others, and we don't see the numbers change. So I think within a lot of the building blocks, there are innovative new ideas. But if I had to say the single most innovative thing that we're undertaking, it's that we're trying to do it all. And we're trying to do it all in a coherent way, that many districts bite off a piece of this. And they're, we're going to do, we're the family engagement district, or we're the literacy district, or we're the leadership district, or we're the funding, you know, the student-weighted formula funding district. And I think we appropriately are trying to put all those pieces together in a coherent way. It's challenging. It's complex. But I hope this graphic takes us at least one step closer to being able to identify... There's 15 things. There's 15 big ideas that we're going to be pursuing for the next at least two and a half years. I don't think it'll be done then, but that's when the strategic plan ends and the school board at that time can consider next steps. So you didn't have a timer on Chair Nathan. I don't know how I did, but I think it's better than the concentric circles. So we're getting a little bit closer, and we look forward to continually sharpening this. There will be a new page on our website that will debut with an initial version of this in the near future. You will then be able to click on each one and find the specific definitions by what we mean, who's working on it, and ultimately, by the end of this school year, timelines, milestones, and ultimately, a data dashboard that shows where our outcomes are against this ambitious agenda. And that's my report.
Thank you. Board members, any questions? Director Marvin?
This is just a comment on what you said about building blocks and concentric circles. And as I'm looking at this model here, I'm thinking, how would we have built concentric circles with these building blocks? So I really, really like this. And once again, thank you, Chair Nathan, for chasing down the Legos.
Not hard at my house. All right. Moving on to our consent agenda, would any board member like to remove any item from the consent agenda for separate consideration? Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. On favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is approved. Thank you.
Might I jump in for a moment? So unfortunately, once again, on the consent agenda, board members, is the passing of a member of the Rochester School's family. And in this case, it's Lori Ann Mack, who died at age 60 of ovarian cancer. She died peacefully. She fought courageously for more than two years. I was fortunate to have overlapped with her in the district, though she was not always here in the Edison Building. She was always incredibly connected to the work that we were doing. Lori was born in Austin, so not far away. She graduated from high school there. In the early 80s, she went on to get her English degree at UW-Lacrosse, and then her master's degree at St. Mary's, and she was a teacher. She taught for many years and then ultimately felt that she wanted to work with teachers to enhance their capacity to serve students. And so she became a literacy coach. And I heard again and again about her passion and her commitment for that work and coaching. And I know she left a really lasting imprint on the teachers she worked with and the students she worked with. She loved going for weekend cruises with her husband, making cards for her family and friends, and spending time with her four grandchildren. And so we are thinking of her husband, Sean Mack, here in Rochester, and are grateful for the work that she did in our district for many years.
Thank you, Superintendent. The next section of our agenda are our focus topics. We have two tonight, and our first is item 6.01, Extracurricular Activities. I see people moving.
That's good. Come on down. Chair Nathan and directors, this is a subject that board members asked for an update on, and so we're pleased to provide that for you. It's really a pulse check on where we are with the opportunities for youth development and learning that happen outside the school day. So Jackie Peterson, our chief of schools, and Mark Queasly, who is our activities director at Century High School and coordinates the work of our activity directors, are going to give us an overview of this. I will just say that when we had the school board study session the other night about deeper learning, I was struck by how many of us, including how many board members, shared a learning experience that occurred in an extracurricular activity. And I was reflecting on the fact that a number of years ago, they did a study of people who won Nobel Prizes in science. And when they asked, where did your love of science originate? 90% of the Nobel laureates did not name the classroom. They named something like an extracurricular activity or a family connection. Now, the classroom was critical, but the spark often happens outside that classroom. So thank you, Jackie and Mark, for an overview of this. And we'll be really eager for the issues that you, as board members, would like us to continue pursuing as we work to strengthen the extracurricular work. So while this presentation kind of summarizes where we are, we're eager for your thoughts about where we should go in this area.
Thank you. I'm Mark Sidekick tonight, but I'm going to first acknowledge that you will know in the data, and we did provide a supporting document with some deeper data than what we have in the PowerPoint, an absence of the robust data we have about student participation in sports. And as the mom of two girls who are now adults, graduates of RPS, who spent more of their time in activities, academic activities, they were on the golf team. I don't know how much they helped the Century Panthers excel there, but they didn't like missing school. They didn't like being away from school, but to play in a day-long golf tournament. But they, you know, first, they spent their time on buses at 5:00 in the morning, going up to the cities to participate in debate. My one daughter was in the orchestra pit a number of times, under the stage, playing and supporting other youth who were participating in activities that are not athletic. And I commit to you that we will do a better job of keeping track of the number of students who are participating in activities that are non-competitive in the future, so we can report on that. They are just as important as the athletes you hear about regularly. So I'm going to turn it over to Mark to go through the PowerPoint with you.
Good evening, everyone. And again, thank you for the opportunity to come and chat with you this evening. First of all, our middle school opportunities, we have a plethora of items that our students can get involved in, and theirs is based on the quarter system through the community at office. And again, this changes from year to year for our students and their opportunities. There is one item there that's not listed, and there is a seventh-grade football that we offer through community education, but that one is in limbo. And if you want me to go into detail on that, I could at a later time. Currently, in our high school programs, we offer 30 competitive programs over 70 levels of participation. Those are squads, teams. In the fall, we have nine athletic teams. Winter, we have 11. And spring, we have 10 programs. And again, our programs are driven by numbers. Most of them are eight, seven through 12. Some are eight through 12. Some are nine through 12. An example of a nine-through-12 program is our boys' basketball. Just because we have such high numbers there, we want to offer that opportunity to high school-age students first. Therefore, we don't, if we're going to cut, we want to try and keep our ninth-grade students or as many of them as we can, because that is their first experience in our high school programming. And across the board, I would say, in our ninth-grade teams, we really try to do that is to keep as many ninth graders as possible, because that is their first opportunity. Then we go from the athletics to the activities. And as Jackie said, this is truly an important part of our programming. I have two daughters also, yearbook advisor, the chair of the yearbook, drum line, and variety of things that my daughters were involved in at the high school level. And Paula and I are very proud of what they did in our school community at Century High School. But these are competitive activities that travel. They have a paid advisor. And I separated that group because these students normally pay a fee to participate in that programming, and that goes to offset our cost for the paid advisors and for some of the transportation costs. This is the group that we're continuing to focus on and try and get better participation numbers now that we're registering them for the activity and they're paying a fee and that type of thing. The non-competitive, still have a paid advisor, but I consider these more of a loose group, except for there's a couple in there that are pretty well-defined for us. But kids come and go in some of these activities, or they're in for a semester and then they're out, or they're in for just a certain activity and then they're back out. And then the last part there is the clubs and organizations. We have in our schools anywhere from 20 to 40 clubs and organizations that run one year, don't run the next. And this group is basically an open door. Those are advisors that open their door after school for students to come in. It could be quilting. It could be card playing. It could be just a variety of non-traditional activities that the students want to do or to get together and talk about.
Four-square and bread baking are a couple I remember that I might have watched.
Yeah. The next participation data that we do have available for you is, this is duplicated participation. And these are the students that are on our roster three times a year, fall, winter, and spring. So I wanted to give you a five-year summary of our boys' participation numbers and then also our girls' participation numbers. So as an example, last year, for Century High School, we had 1,200 students participating in our athletic programs. John Marshall, we had 930. And Mayo, we had 1,287 students participating. Big numbers for one person and a support staff of an office manager to help us get those kids registered each time. those kids registered each time. So you think about that, there's 1,200 kids we registered from beginning of school year to the end of the school year, just at Century alone. And that's, kudos to our support staff. Those three ladies do an awesome job for us. The other is the unduplicated, and I have to keep a close eye on this unduplicated number because of our Title IX compliance. And we try to make sure that we're offering as many competitive boys' programs as we do girls' programs. Currently, we have more girls' programs than boys' programs in Rochester Public Schools. I petitioned in 1997 to add Competitive Girls Dance to the Department of Education and got it approved. So that one is a competitive activity for us, but those numbers help us. Cheerleading does not help us in Title IX compliance when it comes to participation numbers, because it's a non-competitive activity. So, and then the high school league, we have to stay within those parameters, so I can't use non-high school league sports for Title IX. I can only use those that are titled listed as competitive activities. So in a summary for you, pre-COVID, district-wide, we had a variation of 2.9%. Post-COVID, we were up to 3.81%. Girls are participating less than boys. As I teach this course on a yearly basis for athletic directors all over Minnesota, our benchmark is 3% to 5% in the building level. Last year, Mayo was at 6.6. John Marshall actually had more girls participating than boys, and Century was at 4.75% in boys' versus girls' participation. I'll talk a little bit down the road here about the impact of adding programs. Again, this goes up and down, so I try to look at it over a five-year period. Are we still offering the right programs for our students? We, I want to start this by saying we have outstanding coaches and advisors at John Marshall High School. Right now, our number of students participating at John Marshall is significantly, this last year, lower than the other two schools. I do believe that is attendance boundaries. I do believe it's social economics and the availability of programings for students at the youth level coming into the high school level. We are very aware of this. Brian Urquhart and I have had many conversations about how we can change this and what our next steps are within our programming. But again, just because you see the numbers down in that school, it's not the coaches or the advisors. They're working really hard on participation in their programming.
May I interject just one thing? I know my colleague Will Ruffin is working with John Marshall to remove barriers, if it's transportation, to get students to practice at John Marshall, but that is a focus in his office as well.
Participation, our most popular still continue to be football, volleyball, boys' and girls' soccer, the basketball, track and field. Our track and field numbers are expounding greatly, and that's awesome. Again, extracurricular interests that we need to see grow, I know it's a strategic plan, but our middle school programming has to change. We are getting such a huge gap between the haves and the have-nots of what is offered in our athletic programming for our students. I would say right now, if you don't come in with years of experience, you're not going to make some of our teams. And that's a shame from where we were five, 10, 15 years ago with some of our programming. If we're really going to look at this middle school experience, it really needs to be focused on the educational part of it, the skill development, the practice times, that ratio of practice times, and then a well-balanced schedule. Sometimes our non-school programs are more worried about playing more games and less practice, and they're running these kids all over Rochester, Metro, Upper Midwest, all of those types of things. As we look at possible offerings in the future, boys' volleyball continues to push to the front. We had another meeting again the other day with the High School League about this activity. I do believe it's going to be, well, it has been labeled as an emerging sport, so they now have a couple of years to get everything in place for themselves with their feeder program and their stability. But this sport, if we choose to add it, will significantly change our boy-girl ratio numbers, as I talked about several slides ago. This one will jump. If I were to categorize girls, for us to go up 3% in girls is 15 to 20 girls. This will jump our boys 8% to 10%, because there'll be 50 to 60 boys that'll do this sport right away. So that's the complexity as we look down the road at adding this. And I just want to be honest, I think it's a great activity. It's a great activity because some of the kids that are involved are not our traditional students. There are more black and brown students that are doing this, so we just have to figure out a way of balancing that to make sure that our girl, what can we do for girls to increase that number as well? And another great activity that I'm very proud of is the, yes, I'm very proud of this, is the girls' wrestling that's been coming on. My daughters would not have been allowed to wrestle, but this is another great activity where we have seven to nine girls now wrestling, and that is growing. In the state of Minnesota, we went from 250 to well over 590 girls participating in one calendar year. So our numbers are great. Clay targets, another support activity, but it's not a competitive activity under the High School League. Another example of a support activity is robotics. I can't use robotics yet with our participation numbers, even though it's a competitive activity, it's a support activity for us. And then the other thing is, is I think we just, we're trying within the department to take our current offerings, how can we enhance them, how can we have a better experience to get more kids involved and to remove those barriers. Some of the barriers that we continue to talk about is the elimination, or we currently probably, 18, 20 years ago, I sat in front of the School Board and we talked about free and reduced lunches, and how do we get kids involved? And it was very, very straightforward conversation at that time that we did not want to have that barrier. So we offer, if a student is on free or reduced lunch, irregardless of whether they can afford it or not, we waive their fee for participation in athletics or activities. So we take that barrier away right away. And we've never been asked to offset that loss with those participation numbers or with that loss of revenue, and that's been a great thing that the School Board has allowed us to do, so I don't have to go to a foundation or go someplace else to find that funding source. Team fundraisers are continuing to go more and more off the rail, but it's a part of what we're doing. Donations are a part of what we have. Minnesota State High School League Foundation helps a little bit. It was nice to see that there was a recognition for the Rochester Public Schools Foundation. I did start an athletic fund when I was on the board back 10, 12 years ago, and that fund is growing a little bit there. Other barriers are transportation for kids to and from practice. We try to encourage our coaches and advisors to get the van training, but there still is a little resistance with the liability piece and their comfort level with doing that. And then there's a lot of pros and cons with onsite versus offsite practices and the like with that. Some facilities, like Century, I have 107 acres, which offers me the opportunity to have more practices onsite at one time, but John Marshall at 39 acres can offer the same number of onsite practices at the same time. Our co-ed adaptive athletics is another one that's been growing, and it's been great support through the Board's help. We have soccer, floor hockey, and softball, our programs. Again, it's an inclusion of kids in our programming. Minnesota State High School League is in the process of rewriting the bylaw to change how that is supported. Currently, our wording as an example for soccer is it's a 16-week season, and our adapted students cannot do a 16-week season like our able-bodied students. And so I've been working with the Coaches Association, and we rewrote this, and it should pass. But anyway, any other pieces, United Sports was another component that keeps on coming up and talking with us about opportunities there, and also some Special Olympics items too. Some challenges, of course, our facilities, I'm very, $600 a student. We charge 205 at the high school level for 18 weeks, and it's $600 for, and they don't pay for the coach, they don't supply transportation, they don't pay for the officials. And so I think some of our facility costs are driving kids out of that programming because the fees are going so high. Knowledge of sport, the staffing piece, the knowledge of sport, and finding advisors who have that knowledge or even want to apply. We continually are looking for BIPOC coaches and advisors to apply, officials, transportation. Our transportation costs are up 50% this year for us, and that's an alarming change within the department. We've added, we also have some eligibility concerns that are always there with us and our student athletes as they come and go from district to district. I also need to say since 19, or since 24, slow down, Mark, since 2004, our department is smaller, and we offer nine more programs, and we added activities. So we go from a couple hundred kids to 1,000 kids with one administrator and the support staff. As we said earlier, adding more is not always the best thing because we're burning people out, and I'm very concerned about that as a fellow administrator. Like I said, eligibility concerns, parent guardian concerns, student concerns. The adding of our activities, our kids want to be involved. They really want to be involved in anything, and it's, like Jackie said, it's amazing what they come up with for ideas, to be creative, for 10, 12 students to get together, and we want to make sure that we're supporting that and mentoring our coaches. And as I was talking to Dr. Marv before hand, these are part-time jobs with full-time expectations, and that's really overwhelming when these coaches want to come in, work for a couple hours. You can go to McDonald's and work for $15, go home and never have a phone call or an email to respond to. And that's really becoming a hard, hard item for some of our coaches and advisors. Some other things that we want to continue to work on is actually promoting our educational focus, not only their strategic plan for Rochester Public Schools, but the High School League. Promote the equity and inclusion of why this programming is. Dr. Pekal said, there are so many things learned in our activities programs that are not in a textbook. And it is rubbing shoulders, it is that teamwork, that collaboration that pushes our students to be better. And I also think that it teaches them that discipline and that adversity, and how to fail and fail gracefully. And sometimes we don't want to let this next generation fail. It's okay to fall on our face, skin our knee, and get up again, and help support them as to what they did wrong and move on, but those are just some of the things. Sorry, got on a little bit of a tangent there. And then again, we want to make sure that our organizations, our feeder programs for all three of our schools, I think you hear that from time to time in the media, that some of our feeder programs do not promote programming in all three schools. So, questions?
Board members? Dr. Workman?
Yes, I have a question on your possible future offerings, specifically, boys' volleyball with Title IX implications. You said you thought it would probably be an 8% or 10% increase among boys. So I think we are required to report our participation numbers to the state of Minnesota, correct?
Correct. Every fall in MEA week.
So are we also required to report to the federal government, or is that done through, or does the state handle that? And what might be the ramifications if our differences between participation grow beyond that 3% to 5% that you try to keep it in? I mean, what would be the solution? And quite candidly, is that actually enforced?
Yes. Good and bad, it's been enforced. Rochester Public Schools has had that enforced. We were on an improvement plan with the Office of Civil Rights out of Chicago. I got to know the person very well over the five years. So we had a full-scale investigation into our athletic and activities programs. I still have the box of all the information. So it is there. I don't like to say that it's a dark cloud over us, but I think if we don't do our due diligence with watching it and being creative, I think it could be a problem for us. So we report to Minnesota Department of Education. Minnesota Department of Education reports to Chicago those numbers, and then it goes to federal government. So our state funding under that law is tied to that, more so at the collegiate level than at the high school level. But there are school districts like Rochester that were observed. And back when Century opened, even though it was a brand-new building, we had, our baseball teams were playing at Mayo Field with irrigation lights, PA system scoreboard, and our softball fields did not have PA light scoreboard, irrigation fencing. So we spent years putting those permanent fixtures in. We, practice time for ice, we really make sure that we're balancing the ice time so that the girls have the same amount of ice as the boys. Same, I even balance gym time of who gets the center gym at Century High School, boys and girls varsity programs, to try and make sure that we're balancing that as well as we can on a yearly basis. So it's always there. I try to keep it in the front of my brain as I work in programming of that, but it's important. I hope I answered some of that, but not, is there a follow-up?
Yeah, no, sure, you did. But I mean, would you envision a situation where a possible future opportunity would not be offered because it would create this kind of an imbalance?
I think we would have to have that conversation, Ms. Workman, of what boys' programs might we not offer anymore if we're going to bring boys' volleyball on? Correct. But I don't see any girls' programming that is out there, other than the wrestling that we could add. Even though I have, we have two more girls' programs currently than boys', our participation for boys is still higher.
The numbers are small. Okay, thank you. That helps a lot.
I have kind of a follow-up on that, because I was thinking about more, you know, if you offered the boys' volleyball, can you increase the numbers of some of the girls' current programs? And the ones I'm thinking are lacrosse or girls' hockey, that we, getting more girls on those teams would then offset in a similar way. Is that an option as well?
I like your thinking, because we would truly have to do that, right? And an example, right now, we have two ninth-grade volleyball teams. We might end up going to three ninth-grade volleyball teams, which would be a difference in our staffing, but you know, there are some creative ways to try and increase those girl numbers. Right now, we try to offer more levels in girls' basketball, but the numbers just aren't there. We're seeing a large number of girls playing volleyball year-round, being great basketball players, but they're choosing not to. And so our girls' winter numbers are smaller than girls' basketball, than boys' basketball. So, yeah, that would be a creative way for us to do that. Our track and cross-country numbers help us immensely because we don't cut there on the girl side.
So when I was working with parents when my kids were at Century, one of the parents' frustrations was it was hard for them to know what was being offered at the school, especially in activities. And this list of activities that we have is a remarkable testament to what RPS is about beyond our academics. I think of people who are looking at RPS or considering moving to Rochester, and I'm wondering if there's a way to have that information more visible to our parents, to our community, to people who might be looking at Rochester. Because I think side by side with our academic offerings, it really needs to be clear what our school community offers outside of the classroom. So I don't know if there's anything we can do to improve that, but I know there's a lot of work that you do in the school to let the kids know what they can participate in, but I think the message needs to be seen by more people.
And I also, Dr. Pekal and I met with some community members about our facilities, and some of our facilities are in great shape, and others, our surrounding communities are blowing the doors off us. Turf fields are coming, and they're all around us now. Schools that, Byron will have one, Sterfield almost had one. Schools that, Byron will have one, Sterfield almost had one, Triton, Dover Yoda, St. Charles, all these little bedroom communities have them, which is creating kids to open and enroll out of Rochester Public Schools to go there for their athletic experience. I'm not saying that's right, but it's happening. One of the other things that I want to make our board aware of is from time to time, we have people that want to co-op back to Rochester Public Schools. And Dr. Marvin and I have had conversations about this part. We have people who open and roll out of Rochester Public Schools, but want to come back for a hockey experience or want to come back for a lacrosse experience. Well, those dollars per pupil are going to a different district. Is it right to say we're going to co-op with them and bring those students back? That's a wrestle that we're going to continue to have as we talk about co-op. Right now, I'm asking those schools, when they call me, I'll say, I want to know the names of your parents and where they live. And then it becomes crickets because they don't want to tell us that they opened and rolled out, so.
And also just, I think Chair Nathan, the point you make is a really important one. We are in the midst of launching a fundamental redesign of our website, which really is the front door to any organization right now. And we don't do a particularly good job, I think, of telling our story as a system. I think we're getting better. And I think we have a superb new Director of Communications, Mom Sukanutu, who's leading that work. But I think we need to do what you're suggesting, not just with our activities, but across all of what we do in terms of our academic programming, our athletics programming. Because exactly like Mark is saying, we're in a competitive environment for enrollment. And we need to actually be able to tell, we need to do it in a culture-responsive way so we're reaching communities, so websites are not the only way to do it. So, and we know people choose schools often for activities and athletics along with academics. So a big priority for the future going forward.
One other focus of this presentation, of course, is middle school and high school. I know that what is available in our elementary schools in terms of after-school activities varies. A lot of times because you have parent volunteers who are willing to be those coaches or those mentors. And I often hear, well, why doesn't Rochester have this? And because they know there's another district that offers these opportunities. Who, if there's a parent with an idea or a community member with an idea for an elementary, a middle, or a high school activity that they'd like to see brought to Rochester, where's their first point of contact?
At the high school level, I would say they should be contacting the Activities Office because we can give them the information that they need to process a background check, get into the building, get some room usage or whatever they need to get them up and running. And then we also can vet it pretty quickly about whether it meets what we're all about with Rochester Public Schools. And then middle school and elementary, I would say it's the building principal. That would be the key person to contact.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
I have one other question. I appreciate you talking about the fees and waiving the fees for the free and reduced lunch, and I think that's, you know, very commendable. Has there been thought, or are there things that either, you know, the community or anyone else can do to address that same issue in terms of equipment that the students may need? Whether it be, you know, tennis shoes for track or hockey pads or whatever. And I not only think about at the high school level and, you know, the organized teams, but at the feeder level as well in the community.
Yeah, I'll speak for Century because that's the coaching staff that I continually work with. When they do their fundraising, I ask to make sure that they fundraise above and beyond so that if there is a student that needs a pair of shoes or a specialized piece of equipment, that we are able to offer that quietly to that student. We also have some great community partners that will come in and fit students for shoes, whether it's track or cross-country, and then all of a sudden those shoes show up. So there are some pretty neat things that are happening. Specialized equipment, when you're talking safety equipment, there's more of a liability that's attached to that for the safety of the students. And so we're a little bit more cautious. We still fund all of the safety equipment, helmets, shoulder pads, that type of thing through our department so we can regulate and keep track of that. Sometimes we do, go to our booster club and say, hey, this program has this need, can you help us fund that? And they're very supportive, too.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
We thank Mark, who is off to a crosstown game, I believe.
Right? Should be a halftime by now.
And we won't be choosing sides from the board table.
Item 6.02, our school-wide continuous improvement plan update tonight is from Churchill Hoover Elementary School. Come on down.
Chair Nathan, board members, as you know, we have the amazing opportunity to hear from our schools about their improvement efforts. And so it's fun to recognize our lead principal for our presentation tonight, the great work that's happening at Churchill Hoover, Emily Pearson. We have Charlene Haas, our Assistant Principal, Doreen Christensen, who's a social worker, and Deb Olson, fourth-grade teacher. Thank you for taking the time. I know some of us, when it's one of these board meetings and you wait an hour until you get on there, I feel a little guilty because I know how busy you are, but hopefully that was interesting. And in any event, we really appreciate it because it's a really unique opportunity for us to get a glimpse of the work that you're doing. And so we'll turn it over to you, and then I'm sure board members and I will have some questions and comments.
Great, wonderful. Well, thank you for having us. I think we're all excited to be here and it was definitely worth the wait. We'll just start with a little snapshot of Churchill Hoover Elementary School. So I think the important thing to remember is that we are two sites, but one school. So our Churchill building serves students in K1 and 2. And then when they're in third grade, they go to Hoover. So we have 448 approximately elementary students. And then you can't forget about our Littlest Huskies. We have the Hoover Early Learning School there, so almost 200 students more. And you can see a snapshot here of what our population is made of. It'd be nice if they could actually have little faces attached so you could see our students rather than just see the numbers, but it gives you an idea of who we are. So 11% of our students are multilingual and can bring that gift with them to school every day. 20% of our students receive special ed services. We are lucky to have two setting three EBD homerooms at our site, so we serve those students. We are 61% white, 18% black, 13% Hispanic Latino, 5% Asian, and 1% American Indian, Alaskan Native, Native Hawaiian, or Pacific Islander. And about 38% free and reduced lunch. Today, we're going to focus on both of our goals. We have two skip goals and we couldn't just share one. We needed to share about both of them today. So our first goal is an academic achievement goal, and that is about students needing to score proficiently or we're hoping to improve our proficiency for reading in the area of literacy. And we're going to measure it on the MCAs for students in grades three to five. And then we will also dig into our skip goal number two, which is about students being able to empathize. We call it our social awareness goal, and that's going to be measured by the Panorama Survey.
Those are such well-written goals, I want to cry. I'm not kidding.
Really?
Yes. They're measurable, they're clear, they're important. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I had to.
Well, it's a compliment, you can, yeah. So this is just a breakdown of our academic achievement goal. And this, our team here with me tonight, this is just a little bit of who they are we have. We had a great team this summer come together to work on these goals. So our goal is 60% in 2023. You can see that, it's interesting having the two sites because we have 50.7% proficiency in literacy last year on the MCAs, which does not feel good to anybody to have one out of two of our students being proficient in grades three through five. Interestingly enough, that also tied into our 49.5%. So that top figure is on the FastBridge assessment because our little friends at Churchill don't take the MCA. But it's interesting that they are so in line. Sometimes the FastBridge and MCA aren't quite that much. So we're going to do this by focusing on some levers. I could talk about them all day, but I decided to save you the time and just pick on three of them. So the curriculum lever is a really big piece this year. And we are working, I mean, this is as a district, working on implementing really great reading and Haggerty through the literacy lab. So Elton Hills, I know they were here earlier this year. They probably shared about the literacy lab. We had our second-grade teacher go today over to Overland to take part in it, and then she'll bring back that great learning that she had to her PLC. So our K2 teachers are really working on just kind of learning as much as they can during those times and implementing those curriculums, not with fidelity, but you know, as well as they can. One of the exciting things that I wanted to mention was the Spire curriculum for our students receiving special ed services. We've just seen this really big, you know, improvement in the services that they're receiving and some growth already. Our teachers are thrilled with it. So it's fun to have something rather than just either a repeat of what they had gotten in their gen ed class. Now they have something that's measurable and outlined. So that's been something that our special ed teachers have really enjoyed. Our second lever for this goal is our PLCs. So we are dedicating PLC time to the literacy lab. And then for our teachers in grades three, four, and five, we're working on small group instruction and interventions. Our skip team is our leadership team in the building, and we're reading a book together, kind of doing a book study. It's called PLC Plus, and it's trying to bring in equity lens into our PLC work. So that's something that then they bring back to their PLCs as well. So we're just trying to make those a little bit more data-driven and focused on small group instruction and the work that they're doing in the literacy lab. And the third lever for this area is the targeted interventions. And this is another thing that I just need to give the teachers credit for because they are working really, really hard to implement and give the students what they need at their level. We definitely have a ways to go, but it's fun to see progress on that. So we're using our FastBridge and then our K1 screeners, our K1, two screeners, and trying to make individualized instruction. Our teachers have found success using the FastBridge interventions. We have a few in particular that have really dove into that and are trying hard to give the kids what they need. And then we have an amazing instructional coach, Lori, who's been helping them figure out exactly what the kids need there. So those are our three kind of big area focuses for our academic goal.
So Ms. Christensen is our social worker. So she and I are going to talk a little bit about our social-emotional goal. And we, with our skip team, in the fall, looked at our data across social, our panorama data. Last year, we had a sense of belonging goal, which we still continue to focus on, as most of us do within the district as well. We did hone down into our social awareness this year, and our current data we looked at in the fall was 58%. And so what we were looking for for this year was trying to move that to 68%. And I'll let Doreen go ahead and talk about some of those levers that we've put in place.
Yes, so I'm excited to share with you two programs that our school has implemented to help achieve those goals of social awareness and sense of belonging. The first one I'll discuss is Husky Time. Husky Time is a great program that's helping to build connections between staff and students that otherwise may not have much of an opportunity to interact. So briefly, I'll describe how it's organized. Staff and teachers are assigned to lead a pack in a specific location, and some staff are partnered to make sure that everyone can participate. Classroom teachers stay where they are, and other staff who do not have a classroom use other areas such as specials or library areas. Each pack consists of about 12 students with three to four from each grade. So we're mixing all the grades, third, fourth, and fifth, and we make sure that they're not with any classmates. So it's really kind of stretching them out of their comfort zone, making sure they're associating with all different students. They meet once a cycle. Sorry, I don't feel like I'm talking loud enough. They meet once a cycle, and when it's time to begin Husky Time, the front office staff will do a fun announcement and they'll walk to their Husky Time location. And a short 20-minute lesson is provided by the Husky Time Committee ahead of time, so the teachers don't have to do any planning. And we set that up for them. And the plan, the lessons, focus on various goals within the school, such as friendship, respect, kindness, and safety. So it's a great opportunity to really connect with them on things we're working on that we're noticing in the school that we feel like we can improve. For example, a lesson on friendship, we watched a video about a reading of the book, How to Fill Your Bucket. We did an activity on what fills buckets, what dips buckets, and how other people feel when we dip their bucket, how that hurts us, too. So, and then we can discuss. And after the lesson, students are notified by another announcement and they walk back to class. So just a quick 20-minute time for connection. Feedback has been very positive with this program from staff and students alike. They all get very excited. And students I wouldn't have met before because as a social worker, I tend to meet with kids with IEPs or who need me in the moment, and it's the general education population I may not get to meet. But I do get a better opportunity to meet other children. And when they see me, they're so excited, like, what are we having Husky Time? So it just provides this really great environment, builds more connections with staff, more friendly faces, more safe networks for our kids. The next one I'd like to share briefly is our junior coach program, if I can. And I'll just read for you what we give our ESP when they do a little informational session with the classes. This is, I like visuals, this is our staff handbook for the junior coach ESP, or she helps facilitate it. And so basically, what we would read to the classroom is, there's a great opportunity to be a leader at Hoover with our junior coach position. Students who are interested must be meeting all expectations in class and at home and need to complete an application. And we've got a very thick application here. It's only one page to complete, but there's a lot of expectations. There's how to be responsible, how to be safe. What's our other goal? Respectful, yes. If you fill out the application, we will talk with your teacher to see if they feel you are ready to be a junior coach. So there's accountability here. They need references. They need to, their teacher and their parent. If not, we can talk to you about why and see how we can help you meet all expectations in class. This is actually a very important piece of this because there are students who just quite aren't ready for leadership, and we get to have that conversation of, hey, talk to your teacher, thanks for applying, but these are some things we need to work on. And it gives students an incentive to improve and to do better in school, things like that. If you're selected, I will let you know and we will have a meeting about how to be a junior coach. Junior coaches are hired for a three-week round and help at recess by making sure kids are being safe, having fun, and feel like they belong. They're required to wear a vest, and they have these cute little, do you have the picture? They love the vest. So students and staff can easily find you if they need help. Some responsibilities include helping kids make fair decisions, noticing if someone is sitting alone and asking them if they need a friend, and collecting balls and trash on the playground. And we've had a lot of success with rock, paper, scissors. It seems like a simple thing for problem-solving, but it's been huge on the playground. And it's so rewarding to see a junior coach leading their peers in rock, paper, scissors over an argument. It's just the best feeling. Staff may also ask you to complete other activities to help your school. So we want to do things like our buddy benches could use a paint code. We would like our junior coaches to do that, or a peace path where they can make their own decisions. The peace path will have like different steps in solving conflict, taking turns while speaking, making sure everyone voices how they're feeling and what they need. And the junior coach can lead them to the peace path and they can walk down it on their own. So we're really trying to empower students to solve their own problems and not rely so much on adults to be the fixers. If you would like an application, raise your hand, and then we can give them all the applications. Some of them are shy, so they'll ask us later. But, yeah, so basically, once we choose the junior coaches, we have three meetings with them, it's a three-week round. And in the first meeting, we basically describe what a junior coach is. The second one is follow-up. We ask them how they're doing. We do some self-reflection. We go through the expectations. Are you mingling with people? Are you making sure you're branching out of your comfort zone? Are you picking up trash? Are you just playing at recess? You're hired right now. This is your job. This is the expectation. So giving them some of that accountability. And then the last meeting is super fun because they get this really cute certificate signed by their principal. And, oh, I forgot to mention that parents get an email when the teachers approve that their student was selected to be junior coach, and they're so excited about it. It's the best. And I love sending parents positive emails about their kids. It really helps build community with parents, too, who are super important. So I think that's all for the junior.
Awesome. So, you know, some of the things that you see there are those relationship-building opportunities that we have within, for all of our staff and our students, and tying in the Husky Time, which we've had in the past, but haven't for the past few years. So a lot of the kids have never experienced that, and those lessons are happening. So a lot of the kids have never experienced that, and those lessons are happening at both sites. Like Doreen shared a little bit. And the leadership, the junior coaches, is something new in that helping kids grow in that leadership opportunities and show that social awareness, too. So I think you can. All right. So moving on, I just have a few other numbers. So when you look at our data for our SCL here for our panorama, we celebrate here that we reached our 68% of what we were looking at. And when we think about last year, we noticed at 58% that that really put Churchill Hoover in that zero to 19th percentile nationwide for social awareness, and our school was under, district was 64% favorable for that at that time. And as we celebrate now this year, this 68, you know, that 10% raising of that does put us in that 40th to 59th percentile, and we're more even with what the district-wide is for social awareness, which is 70, 67%, I believe, right now. So we're focusing, and you heard Doreen say some of that, too, with that social awareness, describing our own feelings. That's part of what, when we really dug further down into the questions, we only had 33% of our kids that felt like they could describe their feelings at the end of last year. And so really working on that, how are we feeling so that we can push that forward to being able to empathize with other people? If we can describe our own, now let's move that to how they may be feeling as well. And that has increased to 45% in this last panorama survey, surveyed that portion itself with being able to describe our own feelings. And then we work in those empathy lessons as well during our Husky Time, individual lessons that we have, assemblies as we have enjoyed getting them back together again. So we do know, as we look through those numbers, that we can see the further action that we can be looking at as we move forward from our social awareness steps and still focusing sense of belonging as well.
Great. So we do want to just take this opportunity. So Debbie teaches fourth grade, and she's a wonderful example of our, shout out to our Husky teachers and staff because on our panorama survey, you can see here, 82% of our students in three through five reported they had really strong classroom teacher relationships, and that's been something we've been working on. Doreen and Debbie are just great leaders, and so are the rest of the staff. But to be in the 80th, the 99th percentile was just really exciting, so I just wanted to be able to brag about the staff for a minute. We still do have some areas for improvement, so we're thinking ahead to our future skip goals. We will have more, especially about something kind of, Doreen, or Charlene. Charlene and I work on is sense of belonging. And you can see it just all of the sites. You heard from our Hoover early learning, our early childhood a few months ago, and they talked about belonging to, and that's something that carries over into Churchill and Hoover. So you can see just quickly, I'll show you the staff, belonging is something to work on. So this is Hoover staff and Hoover teachers, both around 60% have a sense of belonging, which is in that kind of red zone. And then Churchill staff, so nonlicensed staff there, 60% too responded favorably. Churchill teachers feel a little bit better, so that was kind of an area that we celebrated, but just some thinking ahead, those are things we're going to be working on to make sure all the staff feel like it's a great place to work, too. So our goal for that would be about probably 5%. That's what Charlene and I are working on this year for 5% growth on that. It's just, it's nice to have data to go along with our goals and to see how we're improving. We'd love to answer questions if you have any for us.
Board members? Director Barlow.
Well, first, the disclosure, I have a granddaughter who's a little husky. And then, secondly, the junior coach program, I mean, wow, that is such a great idea. And those key elements of leadership, potential in elementary, and then just imagining them continuing through middle and high school and then the community at large. So just really want to commend you on the, and this is the first year of it, is it? Of the program, and it'll be interesting to see who these students become later. And so thank you. I just really wanted to thank you for that.
Dr. Cook?
Yeah. Well, first, on the goal around empathy, I think it's phenomenal that you were able to achieve your goal already, and so important that that skill was taught in an intentional way. I mean, certainly can't remember anything in my past where empathy was deliberately taught and as part of sort of a coherent effort. But it really is the building block to leadership and teamwork and being successful, you know, beyond the school years and certainly in future grades as well. So awesome results there, very exciting. And then on the reading proficiency goal, I guess I was, I'm wondering if you could say anything about your line of sight to being able to achieve 60% in grades three through five next year, when it seemed to me like most of the interventions or most of the levers were focused on the K through 2, which is critically important and seems like a great place to deploy resources. But for the kids that are already in fourth and fifth grade, like what are we doing for them or what could we do?
Yeah, that is a good question. I think Debbie, as a fourth grade teacher, can talk about, you know, trying to dig into the data, the FastBridge data there, and try to align the kids that aren't meeting with the interventions. So that's why we're focusing on interventions in small groups for our third, fourth, and fifth grade. But it is something that we talk a lot about is like, so we are focusing a lot on K-1, 2, but our measure is on the MCA. So that's why we tied in the FastBridge. I think our teachers are excited about kind of the work the district's doing around. We have a literacy leader in fourth grade that's working on some curriculum and that sort of thing with the district. Because I do think that hopefully these kids with their strong phonemic awareness and phonics background will be coming up to us, but it is a challenging kind of area.
So a lot of what we use is we base our data or we collect the data from FastBridge. We help the students that are falling below those proficiency levels, and we've been grouping them into different groups, giving them different opportunities to increase their phonemic awareness, even though we don't specifically teach that at the upper grades. So we're giving them other opportunities to kind of get caught up to where their other classmates are. We have different interventions that they work through, and then we progress monitor all of the interventions that they're doing in the classroom.
So are those, oh, sorry. Go ahead. Are those interventions responsive to the FastBridge data or are those small groups part of sort of a sequential, explicit, structured sequence that?
We base who is in those groups on the FastBridge data.
Okay.
And then we do further testing to see where their deficiencies are, and then we group them that way. So they're grouped based on what it is that they're, that they actually need. And then we have paraprofessional ESPs, parent volunteers, and other staff that support them that way. And most of our students are being progress monitored by the classroom teacher, so we can see their increases as they happen.
Thanks. Dr. Garcia?
Yes, just to take you back to your second skip goal for the empathy. I appreciate the goal, obviously, and I'm wondering if you, if there are like Churchill and Hoover specific reasons for the goal. We've had a number of other, you know, schools come forward and say, these are the things we were struggling with, which sort of led to the development of this school. And I'm just wondering if you can speak to that, because the numbers are great, you're obviously improving, but where did this come from and where do you sort of anticipate this going?
Yeah, that's a great question, too. I think last year was an interesting year. You know, I heard Dr. Pecal say about, we've seen an improvement in discipline and we've been improvement in climate. And I think that our school climate has really, you know, it was not worrisome, but wasn't the best last year. And I think the data just kind of like showed that, like, ooh, you know, like what we're feeling is real. And so staff and kids were kind of reporting that, I think there's an area that we could improve on. And so we were already kind of thinking about the belonging and thinking about trying to encourage students to be proud of being a husky and to support each other. And then when we went to the data and saw that, oh, belonging's important, but really we have this whole area of students not being able to identify how they're feeling and not being able, some of the questions when you dig into them and things that we see, too, where they can't handle conflict or can't, you know, if they disagree with someone, they can't like respond respectfully. And we saw that with the kind of our behavior things and students not getting along and some of the talking back to adults and things like that that we wanted to fix. So it was kind of a lot of conversation, and then looking at the data kind of led us to those goals.
Dr. McLaughlin?
This might have been covered by the question that Director Cook asked, but I just want to make sure that, I had forgotten, we had a second, separate from the PowerPoint, we had another worksheet here to look at. The second worksheet references Second Step, implementing Second Step with fidelity. All staff will use the language of Second Step with students. Can you talk a little bit more about what that means?
Well, Second Step is our social emotional curriculum that all of our teachers use in the classroom, and we were trying to think of ways to bring in our ESPs and our support staff and try to use kind of the, they have like a step problem-solving model. And so, for example, like Charlene led a ESP meeting just the other week, and we had our school counselor come and talk to the ESPs about how they can use the problem-solving model from Second Step when they are out in the playground and talking with kids.
And is that something specific to Churchill Hoover?
Oh, that's a good question.
Universal.
Universal, yep.
Thank you.
I can just say, Dr. McLaughlin, it's a very timely question. It's a program that's used nationally with pretty solid research. We've had good results with it in the early grades in Rochester, and we were using it at middle school, and we were not getting those results. And so we said this year, stop using it in middle school and keep using it there. It just sort of illustrates the fact that when we do purchase curriculum and programs, we need to be very responsive to the degree to which our teachers are feeling like it fits the developmental needs of their students, because we were getting a very different message from middle school teachers about Second Step, whereas we've heard some good things from where you are. And so we pivoted partly.
Thank you, and thank you for doing that and recognizing that some flexibility is needed with the large number of students we serve.
Hearing no other comments, thank you very much for coming tonight and presenting.
Thank you. Fantastic.
Thank you.
We will move on to our monitoring section of the agenda. Item 7.01, School Resource Officer Contract 2022-23 Implementation Update. Superintendent Pecal.
Chair Nathan, and directors, as you know, the board directed and largely thanks to some board members did the heavy lifting on a rewriting of our contract with Rochester Police Department to have school resource officers in our schools. And that's okay, I'm not distracted at all. Once we figure out the technology and Lori comes to the rescue, we want to give the board an update on how the implementation of the contract is going this year. And so I've asked Jackie Peterson, our chief of schools, and Julie Clayman, who's our coordinator of safety and security, to give the board a process update. There is not a decision before the board right now about the contract, but obviously, as we get to the end of the school year, there will be. And so this is really an implementation update. And so thanks for coming up. Hopefully, we can get that video figured out because it's really, really.
We have to figure it out.
All right.
Just going to get the presentation.
That's great, and we do have a presentation as well.
Are we showing that first? No, we'll start with our PowerPoint. So I want to start just by, I know our team, our Churchill team, just not Churchill Hoover team, but this, the SRO update we want to do is really important, but we also want to point out that the SROs are one, I don't like to refer to people as tools in a toolbox because it doesn't feel right. People aren't tools, but it's a strategy, it's a spoke, it's a leg of the stool. It's so important to remember that SROs are one part of what makes our schools safe and a good place for students to learn. Our social worker who was sitting here talked about, Doreen talked about Husky Time and making connections with even our littlest students. Deb Olson, who is one of the finest teachers we have in the district, remains connected to her students beyond fourth grade, in fact, into high school and beyond, and I can attest to that. My niece, who's a senior, a junior in college, still gets emails from her, words of encouragement. It's about those connections. It's our ESPs, as JM spoke about a few weeks ago, they're calling their ESPs, their security people, relationship coaches. It's about the counselors and people like Doreen who are making connections with students every day, teachers who know their students. It's all of us knowing our students and therefore knowing the culture and climate of the building and when things don't feel right. And that is the most important strategy we can have in terms of keeping our schools safe. SROs are one piece of that whole system to be aware and make sure that we know what's happening in our schools. So with that, you do have a three-slide PowerPoint. You know what? I was a tech educator once upon a time, can you believe it?
No.
I'm so sorry. But things have changed. Things, times have changed. I can't even find the air server in here. What is it called? It's not Boardroom?
ED 137A.
So now I'm going to show off my skills. We do have a brief, very brief PowerPoint and comments to make. We're going to let pieces of a video from Officer Al speak for the majority of what SROs mean to the schools, because it's not just the words he says, but it's how he says that and how he connects with students in this video. I took a few, just a few parts. Sorry, you're going to see all my tabs, and now you know that I'm not a tech educator. But that video that we have to share with you, I think, is one of the best illustrations of how SROs are connecting with our students. So you want to talk a little bit about our first slide? Which talks about the first part of the MOU civic engagement and education.
Yeah, so with the SROs, we wanted to make sure that they got out there and not just walk the halls. We want them to make connections and, and I, with not students, but staff as well. And they made a point to really, really focus in on that this year, and they've not only just met with certain students, but they've been meeting with all students. And that means going to some of their clubs, talking with the students there, they've gone into the classrooms, they've done educational classes, they've gone into, even the cooking class, gone into cook, they've gone into, even with our security ESPs, they make sure that they're in on their, some, I don't know about weekly, but at least monthly, they check in with them, they talk about what they feel is working, what is not working, where's our safety, where maybe our breaches are. So they're doing their part to make sure that everybody, they're connecting with all students. And some of the, some of the SROs actually will go to, like, you know, Al goes to two different schools. Tim Condon goes to the middle school, and so does Officer Gilbertson. He'll go to John Adams, too. So they're busy trying to connect and making those connections with kids and everybody.
Okay, so I'm going to play the video, and Officer Al, this is an old video, you can tell because he's wearing a mask, but he's still giving this presentation in the middle schools, but also we're sharing the videos out into the other schools. So this particular video is about social media, I think it's called Social Media Sense. And I have two clips that I want to play for you, and I want you to see what he says, but also how he's interacting and with the kids.
Where's the one place that you see each other almost every day? All right, school, right? You're going to come to school so mad that you're going to throw hands in the hallway out here. Somebody might get hurt and it might turn into a criminal investigation. Please don't do that. Your life will be much better if you don't follow someone that you don't like. Trust me. All right. Try not to be the messenger. Any of you ever played the phone game? You know what the phone game is? I call it the broken phone game because it doesn't work. If I come to a student at the front of the classroom, whisper something into their ear, tell them to pass it on until it reaches the end of the classroom. You ever play that game? What happens to that message by the time it goes from that student to that student?
It's like change, it's like like.
It's different, right?
Then it's coming and then it just changes.
It's not even the same message when it gets to the end, right? You know why that happens? Because people interpret things differently and when they retell it, they add their own perspective on it. Okay? Social media is the same way. Almost every fight that I've gotten involved with an investigation, I pull the students into my office and I ask them, why were you fighting? The most common answers I hear are, somebody told me, I heard, somebody sent me a snapshot of their conversation with someone else. All right? If it doesn't come directly from that person to your ears directly, just like the phone game, stop and ask yourself, what was added to that message or taken away from it before it got to me? Makes sense? Because everybody interprets things differently and they add their own perspective when they retell it. And believe it or not, we have students here at Willow Creek and at John Adams that will play this game. And you all are going to laugh because you know it's happened. You know what they said about you over there?
Mm-hmm.
Just, you know what they said about you over there? You gotta do something. They're a little bit mad stuff about you. Oh, you should hear what they said now. Right? Everybody knows somebody like that. Back and forth, back and forth, delivering the message until these two get so mad at each other because of what I said, not what they said, what I said, that they end up throwing hands in the hallway and I get to stand back and do this. I just made a fight. This is the coolest thing ever. All right? If it, if it doesn't come from that person's mouth to your ear, stop and think about it before you get so mad that you want to throw hands over there. All right? Know who your friends are online.
So do you, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I did. So this is about a 30, 40 minute presentation that he gives and we currently have this on our board doc, or not our board docs, but in our Google. So it is available for all, all teachers if they want to refer to it or see it themselves amongst yourselves. But it is a really wonderful presentation and he gives it every year and he's going to continue to give it. And he's hoping to reach out to the families of the middle school families to maybe actually get them to all come into, like, we would probably pick a school, maybe probably Dakota. He goes, the sound system's amazing there. So why not go to Dakota and do it? But he'd like to get the parents in. So they, the parents are understanding the ramifications of, of social media also. And we've talked about why stop at just there, but why not the fifth graders that are going to be coming into our, our middle schools? Because we need to get them ready too. And that's another thing the SROs do is they about probably in the next couple of months, they're going to start heading out to the elementary schools and talk to the fifth graders and get to know them and let them, ask them any question they want. So it's just getting those connections early so that when they do come into middle school, they know that there is a police officer in the building. I remember when I did that myself, going into the fifth graders, no, I actually asked, how many of you know that there's a school resource officer in the school? I think maybe about five kids raised their hand and that was probably the average. And I think those kids had older, and the reason they knew is because they had siblings that were in the school. So I think it's really important to make those connections as early as we can and educational. And Al's going to start doing one also on disorderly conduct and behavior issues and what is considered crime and what isn't. And we did sit in on this last one at, this one at Dakota and he's, he's a fantastic presenter. But not just Al, they're all doing it. They're all going into the classrooms and doing presentations like this, vaping, TikTok challenges. They're, they're all getting into the classroom. We just happen to have a video of Officer Al.
I'm going to show just the end of this presentation. This presentation is in one classroom, but we have watched him do this in an auditorium at Dakota with a full grade level and kids are very rapt and interested in what he's saying. So this is the conclusion. I just wanted you to see how he wraps this all up for the students.
The last one down there. Don't share anything over social media, online, text message, whatever it is. Don't share anything that you don't want the world or your loved ones to see. Okay? Once, if you get in trouble and you get involved in a criminal investigation, if I wrote a Snapchat warrant, if I wrote a search warrant to your Snapchat or your Instagram or your Twitter or for your phone, right? If you go to trial, who gets to see that report? Your parents are guardians, right? Because they decide what happens to you legally. Would you be comfortable if your parents or guardians got to see one month of your social media conversations and photographs and videos that you sent? Would you be comfortable with that? Those of you shaking your head yes, outstanding. Rest of you, nah. I want to think about what you're sending. Know what I mean? All right. And the last one. Remember that once you hit the send button, whether it's insults, mean hurtful things, whether it's threats, hey, I'm going to beat your butt when you show up to school tomorrow, or worse, I mean, I'm using nice language, right? If it's a naked picture, naked video, once you hit that send button, it's gone. You have given control to somebody else. You can't take it back. Now it's stored somewhere for someone else to see. So think about what you guys are sending. All right, last slide and then I'll tell you a horror story. All right, remember you have your loved ones. You have your family, your brothers, parents, guardians at home. You have your friends here at school, your friends, the ones that have your back and look, keep an eye out for you. You have trusted school staff. Some of you get along great with your teachers. Some of you get along great with your parents. Some of you get along great with your counselors. And you have a school police officer that for the most part, I'm pretty bored walking around here most of the time. All right, I truly want to keep you out of trouble. If you ever have questions or need advice, come find one of us so we can help you out. Okay? That's the end of the slideshow there. So now you have a little bit more knowledge. All right, all done? You good with the knowledge you got? All right, sounds good.
I'll just say the horror story really is, has to do with a student who came to Rochester from her state to escape having sent a nude picture to one person in her school. And that picture ended up spread throughout the whole student body in another state. And it was so difficult for the family that they moved to Rochester to get away from that situation. And Al talks to the students about it took about three weeks for that picture to show up here in Rochester where that student was going to school. So that one picture really changed this person's life. And so, well, some of what he's talking about with, you know, Snapchat and investigations, sounds like it could be trying to scare kids. It is not. We have kids every day who are sending things that they regret later. So for them to hear the real, you know, ramifications of, of doing something on their phone, which all of our kids are carrying, is really important to protect their safety. So he tells the story of this girl who, obviously it's, isn't sure names, but that it can really be life-changing. So those messages are really important. We have done some parent information sessions on vaping back when parents really needed to see what a vape looked like. I don't know if you remember those presentations and it wasn't that long ago. We've had some sessions on social media. One area that we're seeing way more prevalent is pornography. And while we kind of want to shy away from talking about that, we can't because the percentage of kids that see pornography even by accident is staggering. And it's real and something that we need to help our students in order to stay safe. So I could see that being a future topic for parents. In fact, I know Angie McAndrews, who's a tremendous communicator with parents, she has a great newsletter. Her last edition had a piece in, in there about protecting your students from seeing inappropriate content.
I think it's important also to know that the SROs do keep their doors open for families, whether they give them their cell phone numbers, their, their office numbers, they'll even do Google meets with them. And I know that they've reached out multiple times and families feel comfortable reaching out and who can they contact? And they know exactly who to contact in their school. I know the SROs have met with families for restorative practices. They've done some de-escalation situations and these are things that are not court ordered, but things that have the schools or the families have come together and done it together. So I think that is a, that's something new that they've started doing and I think they really, it's been very helpful. We have some things in the works that we're hoping to do during COVID, which was last year, we tried to do an online meet and greet with the SROs. And I just don't know if families just weren't aware or just weren't able to get on. But they would be willing to do a panel to have, bring families in and, and give any, be open for any questions and answers. They're also getting ready to go to the conference meetings or having their own table so that they can answer questions for family members because they want to be available to families so that they can answer any of those questions.
Talk briefly about the summer camp and some of the student work that they're doing.
Yeah. Some of the things that are on the rise is they're hoping to, well, they are planning on doing a youth leadership academy camp this summer. This is going to, this is their, what they say, their goal, the Rochester Police Youth Leadership Academy is to promote positive relationships, coach and mentor youth, and provide support with illustrating the department's core values of integrity, service, compassion, respect, innovation. So it's going to be students throughout the district and how they're going to go about getting those students, I'm not sure yet. But I'm guessing they're going to leave that up to the administration and for them to pick their kids. And it's going to be a week long camp and they're going to bring in mentors. They're going to bring in people to talk and then they're going to do some team building. I believe they're going to go do the ropes down in Zentlais Road where they do that. I don't know. There's some, I'm hoping to go along with them. So I'll let you know. But that's one thing that's going to be, I know we were trying to get that started before COVID and now that we are kind of where we're at, we can actually try to get this going. And we're all excited about that happening. Another thing that Eddie, one of our equity specialists has put together, he's formed a black student union, the BSU group, and Officer Condon was telling me all about that. They're excited about getting those meetings going and they're actually going to try to reach out to all the other schools and have them all meet if they can at Century where the officers then will connect with them and if they want them there and when they want them there, that they will be available for those officers, for the group. Let's see, what else do we have on the plan? We are going, oh, the equity specialist, we're going to do something with the officers again. We're going to do like a, hold a regular pizza ice cream meeting with maybe five or six students. And I don't know, they haven't decided if it's going to be monthly or quarterly, but something that just kind of let the kids sit around and ask officers and the equity specialists things and talk about current events. So those are the kind of the things that are in the works currently and are being planned.
Can we talk briefly then on our last slide about the difference in response when we have an SRO versus maybe a patrol officer stopping to help?
Well, I think first of all, the SROs are chosen not by just the RPD, but we have a, we get our say too. So it isn't somebody just like who can fill the spot. It's important that we, that we interview and get the right individual for that spot, someone with what we talked about, high empathy. Because that's, it's a huge characteristic to have when you're an SRO. But the thing is, I think whenever you're talking about a street officer versus an SRO coming in to handle a call, street officers are about getting in, getting out and moving on because that's kind of what you got to do. And they're coming in with their resolution. They're going to, they're going to handle it the way they want and it's going to be done and we got to go. I think as an SRO, you can slow things down. You can actually, and the kids actually know the SRO. So a friendly face to a crisis moment is huge versus somebody coming in in full uniform and the student doesn't know who these officers are. That can create a little bit added adrenaline and crisis in addition where the SROs we know are in our, in a more of a softer uniform. So that plays a role. And like I said, they can slow it down. Families, we can, the students will then help with the resolution. They can come up together and talk about it. And so I think things get, it's just easier for the students. It's a much better, I feel, resolution than having a street officer come in who needs to come in, take care of it and needs to go because they got to get to the next call. So I think slowing it down, and that's what we all know. Because the other thing is us, all of our SROs are CIT trained and that's a crisis intervention trained where I don't believe all of the street officers are. I mean, they are, they will eventually get there, but you don't necessarily know that they're trained. Not saying they can't handle the situation because I know they all can. They're all very professional. But I think having that SRO in the school handling those types of situations is an added bonus.
Julie has been taking an inventory of some of the things that are working really well in each of the schools so that we can replicate. For example, Officer Condon, no, Officer Smith at, at Mayo has gone into some classrooms to address student concerns like the parking lot. So how do we get our officers into classrooms where there is topics that really matter to kids, where they can have that conversation and mutually support one another? So we're collecting those ideas so that we can replicate them across the district. And that's what we had prepared to share with you.
Board members, any questions?
No questions.
Director Workman. Could you describe the change in the uniform?
Yes. So it, I would say it's more of a khaki style pants is what they wear. And then they're, they wear navy blue, from what I've seen them all wear, navy blue or they can wear black polo shirt. And they are, I don't even think they're wearing the tasers, no. So they, they just have their, yeah, they vary, no, no, no belt of all the tools on it, just a few things that they need. So.
I know, I heard Officer Al introducing himself and talking about the uniform and saying that he, he's had kids ask if he's a Best Buy security guy or something. They, they don't mind wearing that step down uniform and I think they're still recognizable. If you were needing someone, you can still recognize them as an officer, but it definitely is a softer look.
I have a follow up to that just because I know it's a community concern. They're still, they still have their firearm with them.
They do. A lot of them are wearing their kind of a jacket over it or like their pullovers they'll wear once they leave their office. So I know they do kind of try to be discreet about that.
Appreciate that. Director Garcia?
I just had more of a feedback. So I wanted to say it's very clear that they're doing a lot of repair work and that they've listened to not just RPD themselves, but specifically the SROs in schools, the feedback from the community. And I've, I've heard lots of positive feedback from families. I did just want to offer because I do continue to hear the concern about some of the hallway interactions. I know that the purpose is to create a sense of community, but one of the things that I'm hearing from students is that they feel targeted because they are a student of color. And so they're acknowledging to me, like sometimes I will ignore or just be curt with the SRO when they approach me in the halls, trying to be casual because it feels like, or I'm uncomfortable because I'm perceiving that it feels like a forced interaction. And because I'm a person of color and the other people standing me with are a person of color, that it, it feels like we're being singled out. So why that, while that may not be the intention, that is still present in the schools.
That's really good feedback. Thank you.
Director.
Can you talk a little bit more about the Youth Leadership Academy? How many students?
I think there's going to be about 15, 20 students and I, I really don't know a lot about it. But yeah, that's all I know is that they're going to, it's going to be boys and girls and they're going to have, like, all of the SROs are going to be on that. The sergeant's going to be doing that. I'm hoping to jump on with them and go with them as well. And that's as far as I know what they're going to be doing is team building, mentor, mentoring. And I don't know because it's, it's just going to be kicking off here soon. So I can get you more information and get you more details on that.
I think that would be helpful if you can update us on that. I guess I'm specifically interested in what's the ultimate goal? Is it something about student belonging or is it something about? is it something about RPD recruiting their next class of officers? I want to distinguish those two things.
We'll get more information. We are in preliminary talks. They were more looking at logistics, like if we were to do this, how would we get kids there? How would we chaperone? Those kinds of questions. And we'll get you more information about the intent.
And I'd also be interested in how the administrators are going to select the students.
Yes.
If we can get something about that. That'd be helpful. Thank you. Director Workman?
Piggybacking on, on what Director McLaughlin just said, maybe I missed it. What age group?
I believe it's, I believe it's going to be middle school and high school.
Okay.
That age?
Director Cook?
Yeah. Well, thanks so much for the video, because that, that really provided a great illustration of what the classroom interaction, an example of what the classroom interactions look like for our SROs. I was wondering if you could characterize a little bit the, I, I speak with a lot of people in the, or I get feedback from people in the community that imagine that those types of interactions are more ad hoc. And they just sort of happen when there happens to be an availability, because there wasn't a crisis that day, or for whatever reason, the SRO had some extra time. And so sure, let's stop into a classroom and talk about whatever. Could you characterize kind of how that's, how those presentations are sequenced, or how they're organized, or what scope of students are having a classroom interaction like that?
So I know with, so with Al, talking about him, he actually is bringing the kids now into the auditorium. And he's doing the sixth graders, making sure the sixth graders all get that exact, what you just saw, that presentation. And again, he will be bringing them all in again. And they're doing, they're doing 15-minute presentations. He's going to keep, so it's not just one 45-minute one. They're going to bring them, he's going to cut them into smaller presentations, but where they're going to be happening monthly, or when they can get them in. But that is the sixth graders for that. As for the other students, I believe the teachers do reach out to the SROs and say, can you come in? I know the, they, they send out an email to the teachers saying, I'm available. Let me know what works for you. We don't want to impede on any of your educational teachings that you're doing. So let us know what works for you. And they do what they can.
Certainly more efficient to bring a whole grade level into an auditorium than to, like you saw, was probably an advisory where it was 30 or 40 students. Al is a very gifted speaker, and that's why we recorded his presentations, because then they can be, in fact, I'd be happy to share the link with all of you so you can watch the full half hour. I was tuning in for, to find a couple segments and listening at home. And someone in my household was really intrigued, and they're watching the whole thing, even though our parents, our children are 29 and 31 and well beyond us worrying about their social media. But it was very timely, and you might all find it an interesting presentation.
I think I might just to correct, connect Director Cook's point to Dr. Garcia's. I think you're raising something we should pursue, which is that if you have a systematic approach for all kids getting to know the SRO and understand the role, you're partly mitigating the idea that only certain kids are being stopped in the hallway, which again, may be a good intent, but has that. So if everybody in sixth grade is meeting Officer Al, then if Officer Al is coming over to you potentially, you have some context for it. Everybody has a sense. So that's, that's something that I think we should pursue, this idea that there's a universal interaction. As you say, our first job's education, so that has to fit. But the idea that we're not leaving it to an incident to introduce an SRO to a student, we're introducing them, helping them understand the role and what it is before an incident happens, or even before an informal hallway conversation happens, is something I think we should think about pursuing. Because then you have, you don't have quite the same sense that this is only, the interaction's only happening with certain kids or in certain situations. So we can pursue that. I appreciate that.
And I would say, I guess, to connect what you're saying about Director Cook's comment and the one about the leadership, is that there's also a felt difference in the purpose of like law enforcement for certain groups. And so I think like for those who are of lower socioeconomic status and are persons of color, we routinely get the impression growing up that the only way out of where we are is to become a professional athlete, to become military, to become, you know, local law enforcement. And so then I wouldn't want the opposite thing to happen, in which the way that we're, you know, accepting applications for this leadership program is that like, well, let's choose the group of students who might have the biggest issue or contention with, or discomfort with officers in our community. And so I just, that also I caution, because it, I worried the same thing that I guess Director McLaughlin was, was suggesting, like, is this a recruitment tool? Is it, they're trying to engage to, in their mind, to deal with some of these, you know, tensions between groups? Or is this just a, we're just going to have this open to whomever is interested in the community?
I think with our new chief that's in office now, I think he really pushes, pushes the community engagement with the community. And I think that has kind of followed through with all the officers. And so I think more so in recruitment, I know that it isn't a recruitment, it's more that just giving back and making the connections. And I also think in light of what has happened in the last year or two, I think it's even more important to try to make those connections with kids, because now they've had that, that shade that was thrown on the officers. And now it's more important to let them see, hey, we're, we can, we're just hanging out like you too. We, we're human, just like you, and we want to connect with you on that level. And like you said, the important thing comes down to is who do, who do we pick for the camp?
Yeah. And I'll just say, Dr. Garcia, this is the first time I'm hearing about the camp. And so we'll certainly subject that to some scrutiny.
Yeah, absolutely.
For sure. Director Brown?
And I know we're ready to move forward. But so this was a MOU update.
Correct.
Not really looking for any, it's not an item we're going to vote on informational. So I was curious in that you'd mentioned CIT training for those who are or happen to be SROs. Are they also certified based on the National Association School Resource Officers? Or do you know, or is that something, a certification? RPD looks to have their SROs qualified to?
There's not a certification for an SRO, but I know there's a training that they do go to. So they, they get a, you know, paper that says, yes, you've attended the class. And you, you know, they do do that. It's called NASRO.
Right, right, right. Yeah. In fact, that's what I looked at earlier. And I thought, no reason for me to question whether there is or isn't. But it is good to know, though, that, well, have they attended then the training or the certificate you're referencing?
Yeah. And so, so they, there was a conference that they would always go to in January. I was on the board at the time. And I said, before I left the board, I was going to try to push it to June so that everybody could come to it. It was the one, and I, and so yes, it got moved to June this year. So all of our, hopefully, our SROs will be able to attend that. But in meantime, they've also attended some other SRO-trained courses when they've had, when we've had days off school. So, and I know they've done some stuff in the summertime. So yeah, they're staying up on top of things. And yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And a lot of these questions that everyone's asking makes me think, when we were talking about the MOU and our original intent, I think, was to bring some consistency to the performance expectations of the SROs across all of our buildings. And also to think about how we can collect some data to talk about what the SROs are doing. As we move forward and we are going to have a discussion about approving a contract later on in 2023, is there a way for us to think about a more structured data report about the outcomes? If there are data points that are in the MOU performance expectations? So how many presentations were done in what building? Both to see if there's consistency across the buildings, that each SRO is sort of carrying the same amount of weight, and things like, I know the MOU or the contract has a piece about training, to talk about, document, you know, what trainings have been completed, those kinds of things.
We will give that every consideration. I think it, it should be possible to do. I want to be sure we have laid the groundwork for doing that kind of tracking accurately across schools so that we could bring you really good data on it. I'm positive, going forward, should we continue with our current strategy, we could do it for future years, for sure. Mid-year this year, my only, I don't want to promise something. I think it's a very good idea, and we should have that kind of tracking framework in place. But as we've learned with our school improvement plans, coming up with measurable indicators of the work you're implementing is easier said than done. But we do need to do it. So we'll take a look at what we could do for you this spring. And I think going forward, it's a great idea.
Anything else?
While we're on that topic, if we're going to look at things potentially for the future, I would like to consider input from students and parents and guardians as well. If there's a way to implement that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next item in our monitoring section is 7.02, the superintendent mid-year conversation on goals. Just to root this in our past work, in November of 2022, we approved the superintendent's goals for this school year. And we agreed that we would have a mid-year conversation and have an informal update from the superintendent on progress. So I will turn this over to you.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. And board members, it's late in the meeting, and you've heard a lot from me. And I'm going to try and keep this conversational and concise, because it's an update on a work in progress. There are four goals that the board approved for me this year. The first is statistically significant improvement on performance indicators. The second is implementing our strategic plan. The third is our district finances. And the fourth is the caliber of leadership that I'm providing. I want to report, all of them are done. Everything's perfect. And we're finished. Seriously, briefly, on the, I know, on the first one, the statistically significant improvement on performance indicators, as you know, there's a grid of 30 performance indicators that this board has approved to measure our work, two of which were on the presentation from Churchill Hoover tonight. The, the tension I have about this goal is that, as board members may remember, the first formulation, when the board in the summer was looking at my goals, was that this would be measured by the percent of schools that achieved their own school-based goals. We evolved to what's in the goals now, which is improvement on district-wide goals, three of the 30 on the grid. So that's still very much what I'm thinking about. As you have probably gathered, as we've gotten these updates from our schools on their skip plans, our schools are selecting quite different goals from each other. And I think there's a lot of positive in that. They are, as you heard, having a discussion about the climate that they experienced at Churchill Hoover last year and deciding to focus on empathy. So I have some concern about, for this year, our capacity to demonstrate improvement on a limited number of district-wide goals, given that our buildings are, I think, increasingly effectively focusing on school-based goals. So I think this is still a really good goal. Ultimately, over time, it does, we are aiming at system-wide improvement. But I have some concern about the way we formulated this one, given that our schools are focusing on some pretty different priorities. Our previous approach to this was more rooted in that, saying what percent of our goals achieve, the schools achieve the goals they set for themselves. And for reasons that board members will recall, we pivoted to this approach. But, but it's a work in progress. And so either way, we're focused on improvement. And I think, I hope board members are hearing what I'm hearing in these presentations, which is our schools getting better and better about being clear about their objectives and the strategies or what we call levers that they have in place. Second is implementation of the strategic plan. You've also been getting updates on the, the district-wide initiatives for systems change or DISCs. And the measure of my performance is, do we have very clear goals for each of the nine change efforts we have underway this year, that the board can look at in July and say, yep, those are measurable, clear, and realistic? All of those groups are very actively underway. I would say some are reaching very clear and current conclusions. The family engagement group has given me their initial recommendations for our approach to family engagement. Others, frankly, are struggling a bit more, because some of the issues that they're dealing with are, are pretty complex. I think we're on track to have good plans for you to review in the summer. My biggest concern about this goal is actually not going to be the quality of the plan. It's the human and financial capacity to implement them. I think we're going to have very clear strategies for change, whether it's deeper learning or multi-tiered systems of support or family engagement. The thing that gets in the back of my head is, I think all of us are committed not to have those be implementation plans that we don't have the people or the dollars to actually bring to life. My goal doesn't actually focus on that piece, which is, my goal is more, do we have good plans for, for system change? The capacity piece is the thing that I'm most thinking about. Which leads us to my third goal, district finances. I submitted to the board, and the community can find a 10-page recommendation that was posted to Board Docs today for the next round of our budget stabilization strategy, which does involve additional budget recommendations this year. I did not put in the memo that you got today, but I'll, I'll share now, and we'll talk about it, the study session next week. If you approve that strategy, which we're asking you to approve in February to guide our budget development process, and if we execute it effectively before June, when we ask you to vote on the budget, the proposal I shared with you today would come up about $200,000 short of a balanced budget. But in a $250 million-plus organization, that's very close to balance. And so the recommendation that we shared with you today, I think, very realistically puts us on path to achieve that objective by June, even without major new investments in state funding beyond what we already have in the budget. Though the governor today released a proposal that would have some significant benefits for Rochester Public Schools if it is approved at the legislature. So definitely on track with the finance goal, but some very difficult decisions ahead of us in getting there. And then the final goal is how the board evaluates the caliber of my leadership. And as I agreed with our previous chair and vice chair, and then as the board discussed, we need a framework for defining high-quality leadership in order to do that. So it's not just sort of everybody thinking what, you know, good leadership constitutes. And the working group that has been focusing on leadership, the DISC group, has, I think, come identified and come close to a very promising framework for leadership that comes out of the University of Washington. And the idea is, this would apply to leaders at every level of the organization, from school principals to me. And in this framework that we will obviously share with the board when we come to update you on that work, there are four core components. Creating equitable community is number one. Two, learning and teaching environment is number two. Three, resource management is number three. And four, collective leadership is the fourth. And in the equitable, equitable community piece, our vision and mission and culture and climate. In the learning and teaching environment, our vision for learning, curriculum, pedagogy, and assessment, and improvement of teaching practice. In the resource management, our identifying priorities, aligning resources, and developing talent. And in the collective leadership, our personal development and collaborative culture. So I'm pretty enthused about that framework that they found. And so what we would do is, we'll be bringing that to you anyway, as part of our vision of high-quality leadership and RPS. And then the board could use that lens to be in dialogue with me and ultimately evaluating the leadership that I'm providing. So I'm, I'm pretty enthused about that frame. There's some good measures of that framework at the principal level that exists that the university has developed. But I think we could adapt that for system-level leadership as well. So those are the four goals. That's the, where we are mid-year in progress toward them. If I sort of had to flag an area of concern based on where we added, it's that goal number one, as I mentioned, where there's a tension between seeking district-wide improvement in outcomes and acknowledging that each of our buildings is different and working to address different student needs. And that's showing up in the goals and strategies that they're putting in place. And I think that's a productive tension, but it's one that I think ultimately we will have to resolve, not just for evaluating my performance, but also the measuring progress on our strategic plan. What should be building level? What should be system-wide? It's kind of the eternal question for school districts. And it's one that we'll be grappling with, I think, when we get to my evaluation next fall. So, Madam Chair?
Thank you.
That's my update.
Board members, any questions or comments at this point?
I just said, yeah, a quick comment. So I appreciate the update too on goal four, because I also was thinking, like, how do you operationalize leadership awesomeness? But one of the things that I think I appreciate, I feel like a little bit of a celebrity when we go to MSBA conference, because when people figure out that we're from Rochester, they're like, ooh, you're from Rochester Public Schools. And one of, I think, And one of, I think, the things that we often get identified by is our shiny new superintendent. So I appreciate you. Others are recognizing the work that you're doing in the district, and it certainly makes our job easier when things are running effectively and smoothly.
Thank you.
Dr. Marvin.
I don't think of you as shiny.
I don't know, actually Kurt, the video guy. I'm not kidding. He brings a pad for me when we do those videos because I do shine, actually. So I'm not going to get too personal, but.
You're right, Adam. Kirsten, I'm looking at this. We discuss these all the time. I mean, virtually every meeting, we're talking about this, and I think for the first time in a long time, your goals are absolutely the work of this district. So I know this is a discussion, but the thing is, it's what these buildings, these meetings are built around, so thank you. And shiny or not, we're still glad you're here.
Any other comments? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We move on to the action area of our agenda. Item 9.01, acceptance of grant funds. Now, this is an action item, but it's a little different than other action items that we've had because we looked it up in our policy and confirmed it with MSBA. But in the case of grants like this, we have to approve it by a two-thirds vote. So what we're going to do is I'll read the resolution. I'll ask for a motion to approve in a second. We'll have information presented in a discussion, and then when we take the vote, it has to be a two-thirds vote. So be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby accept the grant funds from the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative Foundation in the amount of $1,222,420 to support the district's deeper learning initiative from December 14th, 2022 through October 31st, 2025.
Move approval?
Second.
Great. Superintendent Pecel, information?
Board members, as you know, the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative is the philanthropic arm of Mark Zuckerberg, who's the founder and CEO of Facebook, and Priscilla Chan, who is a pediatrician, who also started a school, cares deeply about education. They have supported our work through a smaller grant last year around teacher-student relationships and are very enthused about our strategic plan. This grant will focus on two components of our strategic plan, deeper learning and then building belonging. And it will provide us with resources to participate in the deeper learning dozen that we had, join us at the study session last week, as well as to do some deeper research and analysis and community building around both deeper learning and belonging. That will happen this year, and then each of the next two years, every middle and high school in the school district, including our area learning center and Phoenix Academy, will get a mini-grant of $40,000 a year to help them operationalize their plans around belonging and deeper learning. I will say to any elementary schools that are out there listening, we know that you're not included in this grant, but we are seeking resources to provide the same kind of support to them. This grant will also have a rigorous applied research component that Dr. Peter Ruck will be leading, so that we will hopefully, two years from now, be able to say, did this investment produce deeper learning and better belonging? So I would recommend approval of this. I think this is just the first of a growing number of philanthropic investments in our work that can support the hard work of change that's happening across the school district.
Board members, any questions? Dr. Cook?
The, are the purpose that has been identified for these grant funds, I'm just assuming that it's permissible under the grant award, but in particular, I get the sense that the $40,000 mini-grants, as you described them to the individual schools, will be allowed to be spent with some discretion at those sites, and that level of discretion is permissible, and that was all part of the grant application.
Yeah, Dr. Hook, this is a strategy I've used with some success in previous change initiatives, where yes, you are giving that site some flexibility, how are you going to use this? It's intentionally not enough even to buy a single position.
Sure.
It's enough to support professional development, collaboration, research, go take some trips, travel, learn, youth engagement, family engagement, you know, buying food, things like that. It will have that flexibility, but there'll be very clear objectives for what the goals around deeper learning and belonging will need to be. And so that's a challenge insofar as we have to make sure that the dollars are used in ways that are aligned with our strategic plan and funder intent, but I'm pretty confident that we can make that happen. And if this works, it's fun because suddenly at Kellogg Middle School, they're sitting down to say, okay, we have some resources, some scarce resources that are more flexible than like what we get from the state of Minnesota. How are we going to light a fire under our efforts to, you know, increase deeper learning and build belonging in ways that aren't going to replace the core work they're already doing, but can enhance it, I think? So that's the threat, the strategy.
And other than yourself, are there others that contributed to the grant application that we should all be celebrating for their successful application for $1.2 million?
Peter Ruck helped me put together the research component, and Denise Moody, as always, was really helpful in pulling it together at the last minute, as grant proposals often are. So those folks in particular were really, really critical. Dr. Akbamu will have the key leadership role in actually bringing this to life. So I gave you a million dollars, FA, now you're going to make it all happen.
I want more.
You'll get more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Marvin.
And I just want to underline, because we had one question about this. This is not taking money away from any other program. I mean, it's pretty obvious. This is an incredible award to Rochester from an outside, highly respected organization so that we can do additional work. No child is going to suffer because of this, so yay.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Two-thirds.
How do you measure two-thirds?
Well, not hearing any opposition, I'm going to say it was unanimous. Thank you. Motion passes. The next item in our action section is 9.02, approval of additional school resource officer. We had a preparation for action item at our last meeting, so this is an action item. I will again read the resolution and will ask for a motion in a second, and then we will have our discussion. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby authorize the administration to amend proportionately the school resource officer services agreement with the City of Rochester to include six full-time licensed peace officers from the time the City of Rochester is able to assign the additional officer through the remainder of the agreement that is currently in effect through June 30th, 2023.
So moved.
Second. Move in seconded, information?
We had a good discussion of this in prep for action, but I want to thank board members for pushing for some greater clarity of how this additional SRO would be assigned, and so it's in the background on the resolution, but the answer is each of the three comprehensive high school buildings and Phoenix Academy would be served by an SRO, while the four comprehensive middle schools would share an SRO between two sites. The addition of the six SRO would allow for more consistent coverage at the ALC with the high school SROs rotating coverage one day per week. If board members have questions, we certainly could handle them, but we are always continuously looking at how that scarce resource is allocated to meet the needs of our schools. And so at this point, we're really just asking for the authority to add that additional SRO, and as we discussed previously, nothing in this resolution impacts the board's authority to make decisions about the future role of SROs in our district when it is time to consider the contract this spring.
Dr. Garcia.
I just had a clarifying question, and I guess I didn't really articulate this well in our last meeting. So if we tell families or the district that the SROs are not like frontline defensive disciplinary issues, yet that was kind of how it was couched during our discussion, but you're asking us for money for another SRO and not mental health services or other supports that we could be providing students that are needed in these other schools, I think I need to hear what options we exercised prior to this that would justify an additional person and why an increase in these other services isn't before us right now? Like, why is this the thing that we're getting and not the other?
In terms of the, let's call it, student support work that broadly stated, those investments in the current budget are all underway, and we will be thinking very hard about the needs when we bring you the budget for the future year. There was not a specific change in the staffing model in opening the new schools that caused us to deviate from the way we usually allocate those resources. So the new schools were assigned counseling, social work, based on the formula we've historically used. So those allocations have been made. What we didn't do was change the SRO assignment to reflect the new schools because it's in the contract that you can only have five. So there were new social workers, counselors, mental health professionals. I want to use the term relationship coach because I like what John Marshall has said, better than security ESP. All of those were allocated to the new schools per the staffing model. When we opened those new schools, we didn't change the SRO piece, and as we got into this year, we did discover that there were times where incidents occurred and we had SROs moving across the city more frequently than is optimal. And so this modest increase of half an FTE would also not cover a full counselor, social worker, or other support because the Rochester, City Rochester covers the other half of the SRO. So that's essentially the rationale for why this increases before you now, where you approved those staff for the new schools when you approved the budget last year. Thank you.
Dr. Barlow.
For me, as I have given consideration to this, the use of the term proportionality kind of runs afoul in my mind with the additional research information I have conducted regarding what national standards, though there be none, in terms of how SRO should be allocated or provided in a, for districts who may be so inclined to provide them. And so absent a policy or an administrative plan that would suggest, be it based on X amount of students or in this instance, X amount of additional schools, you know, if the thought is with the creation of X amount of additional schools, we will automatically probably recommend an additional SRO. I don't necessarily see the need just based on the numbers alone. And especially, and we had research presented this past fall, that there really isn't a national norm in terms of what districts do, what, you know, the bottom line should be, what the threshold should be. And I guess I just share that to say, you know, even though the funding is not going to impact our operating budget, for me, it's still just a principle of rationale, okay? Proportionality, that's rationale. But it's really tied to a plan or a vision when, again, the premier organization for SROs, NASTRO, suggests different parameters of consideration. And that's all, so regarding that.
I appreciate that, Dr. Barlow. I would say we didn't, I didn't propose it with the budget this past year because I didn't want to propose it until I knew there was reason to need it. And what I have heard from people like Ms. Clayman, who has a background in this, and from our principals, is that there's a need for this additional resource, and so that's why I'm bringing it forward at this time. Certainly, you're correct, there's no ratio that is driving this recommendation that I'm aware of, but there definitely isn't, that it's the conditions on the ground in Rochester that are leading to this recommendation. And, you know, candidly, given that I know this board has had a robust, and still is having a robust discussion about the role of police in our schools, it's not one that I made lightly. And so it's the recommendation. That said, it is also not one that I believe is the single most important issue facing this board either, certainly. And so I understand the board's need to balance different priorities at different times. Could we continue to move forward with the safety and security work that was described earlier in this meeting, absent this additional officer? Yes. Do I think that the safety and security work would be enhanced with this additional officer? Yes.
Dr. McLaughlin.
And I kind of, you know, thinking and reflecting and knowing this topic was coming up tonight, I reflected somewhat on what Dr. Barlow was talking about, or Director Barlow was talking about, about, you know, what's best for this role in our district when he and Dr. Garcia and I were very involved in modifying the MOU and getting it modified so that we could recommend it to the board with some significant changes about how this role was being used in our district. But then also, what Dr. Pecel is talking about, that the principals are clearly asking for it, that they're doing this in the best interest of their students and the safety and security, but I also look at it in the sense that it's an equitable way to disperse this role amongst what is now more buildings. And I want to make sure that all the students are served in the way that both the principals and others believe they need to be across the district, so not leaving out a middle school that perhaps is new and too far north and doesn't get the services that they need, or the ALC that has a little bit of a different population, but principals are consistent with some level of need there. That's kind of the question. I'm not really super clear as to what is needed at the ALC, but we're being asked to stretch our resources there in a way that our current five officers can't meet, and that concerns me as well. So overall, I think, I look at this in the sense that we're doing this just for the rest of the year and with more consideration in the future. And for that reason, I believe that I can support this because of how it's been presented to us of equitably dispersing this resource and that there's a strong support of this from the principals who are closest to the students and see that need on a daily basis.
Any other board members have any comments? Oh, Dr. Cook.
Yeah, just quickly, I just wanted to, I'm pretty sure I already understood this, but if I'm incorrect, I'm hoping that you could correct me or someone can, that even though the funds for the district's half of the school resource officer would be coming from the Safe Schools Levy, there, I mean, since money is fungible and there are uses of the Safe Schools Levy that are currently paid out of the general fund, whether it's the licensed school nurses or social workers or chemical dependency specialists and so on, that just, we could just as well pay for some of those other services out of the Safe Schools Levy, and in effect, it's still $70,000 a year for the district's share that would be otherwise available in the general fund. I mean, is that an accurate way to think about this, or?
Yeah, Dr. Cook, the Safe Schools Levy is not entirely flexible. So for instance, paying for a classroom teacher providing general education was funding would not be an appropriate use of those, but some of the roles that Dr. Garcia was asking about certainly can be borne from that. We have a surplus that our calculations suggest would go about two years. That takes us through the redesign of our funding formulas that we know is the big work of next year. I think this is one example among many that we ultimately need to bring you options for how we fund critical functions in the district in an adequate and sustainable way. I would say that the other student support positions that you mentioned earlier are also needing the same kind of clarity of funding stream. And so this surplus allows us to take the funding for the SROs across our funding redesign, and we, this board then, you already have the opportunity to make different decisions about the contract when it's renewal time. We also can, and I think need to, include the issue of funding.
We also can, and I think need to, include the issue of funding for SROs in the finance redesign that we're going to do across general fund, comp ed, ELL, special ed, achievement and integration. All of those will be bringing important decisions for you. This is a relatively small, but a very important, high-profile function that we need to resource going forward. So the recommendation I'm making to you now is related to the fact, frankly, that we have a surplus and we can do this. This doesn't require cutting something in the general fund that is more, but yes, we could fund some things in the general fund with the $60-plus thousand that I'm recommending we allocate, although because the year is half over, it won't be that amount of money for the remainder of this year. I think also just, I know it's not a question that any of you have raised, and I think it's something that is foundational in the board's direction to me on SROs, but to amplify something that Julie Clayman said earlier, the character and background and habits of the person that would occupy this sixth position is of paramount importance, that we, and that, I'm confident that RPD understands the kind of people like Officer Ozola that we want in our schools, but we have veto power. Like, they're not sending a cop off the street who's going to throw kids up against lockers into our schools, nor do I think they want to. But we have very clear authority to approve whoever this officer might be, and I think we have a good profile for the kind of person we'd be looking for, should you choose to approve this recommendation.
Dr. McLaughlin?
I just have one other comment, and maybe it's something that can be looked at moving forward when we do need to look at the contract at the end of the year. I think Officer Al's a rock star. I've known this for a while, but I want to hear more about the other officers, because I know some of them are newer, and I want to make sure that they have buy-in to the changes that we made to the contract, and that I know the leadership does, and I know Officer Al does. I don't know as much about the others, and I would really like to see more of that if it's available to us.
I appreciate that, and I think we can marry that with Director Nathan's request for some common metrics across, you know, what's happening.
And I also look at it in the sense that we have to, you know, look ahead, that we know Officer Al's not going to be there forever. They do rotate, that I want to make sure that this is ingrained in their culture, particularly for the SROs that are coming to our district.
So before we take a vote, if we didn't have a sixth SRO, is there a way to summarize what you think the impacts would be, the biggest impacts on the other sites in terms specifically on SRO services?
I think that where we've landed on the current plan to assign the sixth SRO, as it says in the background on the resolution, it's in particular enhancing support for our Area Learning Center that we would not be able to provide, that that would be the biggest step we couldn't take if we didn't do this, for some reasons, partly also geography, just where the ALC is located. So that would be the biggest one. And as I've said, I understand this is a tough decision. If the board chose to want to either not move in this direction at this time or to table this at this time, that certainly is an option. I can't tell you that if you don't approve this, nor would I tell you, there's going to be a crisis that is not going to happen for sure if we add this additional SRO, but it would be the support for the ALC that would be the main thing that would move forward.
So there would still be some sort of reorganization of SRO times to serve Dakota? They would just have to take away from?
And there has been. It's just we have to keep looking at the stretch, because a lot of the stuff that we've talked about is not, and nor do we want it to be, it's not crisis response. It's the relationship building, it's the presentation, it's the family engagement piece, and that's the kind of thing where if you don't have enough engagement in the building, time in the building, that stuff falls to investigating what was found in a locker, you know, kind of a thing.
Any other questions before we take a vote? All those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
As I heard at four to three? Motion passes. All right. So next item on our agenda is 10.01, our annual board calendar update. A copy of the annual board calendar draft is available on board docs. Anybody can search it or look at it to see when upcoming topics are happening. Does anybody have any items that they would like to put on a future agenda for consideration? Item 11.01, board questions and responses for this meeting. There were no questions submitted, so that item will not have a document on board docs. 11.02, upcoming board meeting dates. Our next study session is January 24th at 5:00. Our next regular meeting is February 7th at 5:30. Another regular meeting on February 21st at 5:30, and a study session on February 28th at 5:00. It should be noted that we had recently announced a potential special session on February 7th to discuss field trip fees, and we have no field trip fee requests, so we will not need the special session. And our regular meeting will start at 5:30 on the 7th of February. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 8:24 PM.